President City Council meeting for October 10th. It's great to see so many people here this morning, all the smiling faces. I wanted to announce that my rematch with Mike Tyson went pretty well. You should see him. But, so anyway, a little cancer, they had to remove it and then take some skin off here and graft it onto that and sutured up. And it's hard to sleep when you're asleep on your right side. Can't do that anymore, so I'm a little bit tired today, but we'll get through it. I go in next week, they take the stitches out and we'll see how, if my ear stays on or if I'll be the only earless council member in history. So we'll see. Anyway, thank you all for being here this morning. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Krabasi.
Here.
Councilmember Soria. Vice President Arias.
Present.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha. Council President Capriolio.
I am here. So with that in mind, I have a ringing in my ear, I don't know why. So with that, we'll have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if we'll all stand. And Adip, if you'll come forward and lead us in prayer. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here. Thank you for participating.
Good morning all to my fellow residents of our great city, our city leaders. I begin with this invocation. Vai Gurji Ka Khalsa, Vai Gurji Ki Fadhe, Ekon Kar, Sat Nam, Kartapur, Nirpav, Nirvair, Kal Murth, Ajuni, Sapang, Gurprasad. Just like our great diversity in Fresno, every day we hear different communities in different languages invoke that which they hold dear and that which reminds them of something greater than themselves. What I shared is our commitment to truth, accountability, and wisdom. And we hope, in terms of our deliberation today at this meeting, in terms of the way we treat each other, in terms of the way that we commit as residents and as a community here in Fresno towards these three truths. Thank you.
Face the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the United Nations, one nation under God, with wisdom.
Next, we'll have the agenda review. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
One change to the agenda under City Council. It's the item, it's the bill for introduction adding the Tony Hunter Organ Donor Protection Act, Section 3-126 of the Fresno Municipal Code related to paid leave for organ and bone, marrow donors. That's going to be heard at 11:00 a.m.
Very good. Any other changes? Would any council member like to change anything on the agenda?
Council President, I'll make a motion, but I did want to add something.
That's fine.
If we could adjourn the meeting in memory of Guti Suru. She was a beloved community member, Sikh woman, leader, and an educator who will be missed by this community, and we lost her this weekend.
Of course. Member Brettafield?
On items 3G and 3H, I have a conflict on a couple of the Housing Authority items, and so I'll be recusing myself on 3G and 3H.
That's on the consent calendar?
No. That's on the general administration.
Very good.
3G, 3H.
Thank you for that. You may have to remind me one more time. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member Soria.
Second.
Second by Member Arias. Is there any opposition? Passes seven zero. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the amended minutes of September 26, 2019 council meeting?
No changes.
No changes. Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Chavez. Any opposition? Thank you very much. Passes seven zero. Now we'll go to ceremonial presentations. First is a proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is sponsored by the Mayor's Office. So is there a representative from the Mayor's Office to kick this off? If not, we'll move on to proclamation of Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week and proclamation of the John Luttrell Day. This is sponsored by Member Soria.
Good morning, everyone. So we have two special proclamations related to code enforcement. So today here, we have our city attorney, Doug Sloan, and then also Erica Camarena, who is a chief assistant city attorney. And as you guys know, this last budget cycle, code enforcement was moved under the purview of our city attorney's office. So we're proud to continue supporting our code enforcement and have them under the city attorney's purview. So the second week of October, we recognized hard work of our code enforcement officers. Code enforcement officers are our eyes and ears in the community, helping address issues such as illegal dumping, some private property, blighted buildings, tall grass weeds, inoperable vehicles, among a million other issues that impact how our neighborhoods look. Code enforcement officers help enhance the quality of life, health, and safety of the residents of the city of Fresno. I believe that it's important that we recognize each and every one of them for being out on the field, being the soldiers on the ground to make sure that our community is beautiful, that it's safe, and that our neighborhoods look nice. So I, again, I just want to thank you guys. I know that in our office, we consistently use you guys to go out when we have issues that are reported into our office, and you guys are very, very timely and respond very quickly. So we appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on the ground, and so I would pass it over to you guys to share a few words.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Soria, for acknowledging our code enforcement officers. Yes, it's been about three and a half months that code enforcement has been under the city attorney's office, and it has been a very interesting and very wonderful experience for us to get to know each of the code enforcement officers and really dive in and learn everything that you all do. You guys go out and you're dealing with a lot of difficult individuals, and I can't tell you how much we truly, truly appreciate you. I feel very honored and proud to be overseeing code enforcement, and I look forward to working with you throughout the years to come and look forward to some positive changes and just continuing to do what you do makes us look good, and so we appreciate you.
Also want to add my thanks for all the hard work you all do. We're going to be having a conversation later today about code enforcement also, but at this point, just thank you all. We've got 90 people upstairs doing a fantastic job helping in the community, so thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas every year, the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, the city of Fresno takes this time to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that work tirelessly to serve our community. And whereas the code enforcement officers provide safety, health, and welfare of the residents in the city of Fresno through the enforcement of local, state, federal laws, and ordinances, dealing with various issues pertaining to building, zoning, housing, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers have a highly visible role in the city of Fresno, regularly interacting with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding tasks that often do not receive appreciation for their part in improving the quality of the life of the residents and businesses in our local community. Here in Fresno, we would like to acknowledge and thank code enforcement officers for their valuable work. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12th, 2019 to be Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Fresno.
You know, if I may, I'd like to add one little factor. Would all you folks stand up that's with our fantastic code department? Please stand up. You need more recognition than that. You guys are the best. We really, we can't thank you guys enough for all you do for our community. So please keep up the good work. Say that with a lot of love.
So, because we do want to highlight one individual, we'll call up, I think, everyone to come and take a picture in a minute, because I think it is important to recognize all of you, but I did want to highlight one individual from the code enforcement division, which is John Luttrell. John, do you want to come on down? So John is employed as a senior community revitalization specialist. He was recently chosen by the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers to be this year's Code Enforcement Officer of the Year. So it is a tremendous accomplishment. Yeah, let's give a round of applause. And he was the only one chosen in the state, so I'm sure this is a very coveted recognition. Congratulations. He has worked for the city of Fresno for 18 years. In his early career, he was responsible for graffiti abatement. We know, at least the council members, we love that because I know that as soon as that gets reported within 24 hours, it is cleaned up, so we appreciate that. And also, community outreach and education. He created the B.O.D., Bring It Down Anti-Graffiti Education Campaign for fourth and sixth graders, where he would go to schools as Bob, character making the education memorable and fun. Over the last four years, has revamped and expanded the illegal dumping program, significantly reducing illegal dumping within the city, has worked hard to proactively identify hazards and code violations, and works directly with residents and business owners to solve their issues quickly and efficiently. He also monitors surveillance cameras strategically placed throughout Fresno to identify, investigate, and successfully prosecute illegal dumping violators. He assists with the tire amnesty events in Fresno, continues to demonstrate commitment to not only the division, but the entire city of Fresno and its community in his profession. So I want to thank you, John, for everything that you've done, and congratulations. I think this is remarkable that one of our code enforcement officers is recognized.
Did you want to say?
This is quite an honor to receive this. I thank all the council members and Councilmember Soria for your recognition. It was an honor to get nominated and also receive the award from KCO for this year's Code Enforcement Officer of the Year. I have a great staff. I enjoy our change with working under the city attorney's office. I'm looking forward to see the changes that our department's going to go through and what's going to happen as we grow and expand our code enforcement division. But just thank you to all my wonderful staff and coworkers. We have a great group of people upstairs, and I've just really enjoyed my 18-plus years working with the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Also here, thank you, John, for all you do. That's great to be recognized like this. So fantastic job, and I'm sure there are probably dozens of other people up in code that could have been in the running for the award too, but thank you in particular.
So, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record? Thank you.
Whereas the city of Fresno recognizes and congratulates John Luttrell for being chosen by the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, KCO, to be the 2019 Code Enforcement Officer of the Year. He is the only code enforcement officer to be chosen for this award in the city of Fresno and in the state of California in 2019. And whereas John has served the Fresno community for 18 years now, beginning his career as a laborer and eventually working his way up the ranks to his current position. And whereas he is not only an active member in the Fresno code enforcement community, but the church community as well, where he serves as a life group leader alongside with his wife Donna. And whereas the city of Fresno takes this day to recognize John for his dedication to the Fresno community and to thank him for the everlasting impact he has made in the code enforcement division. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim October 10th, 2019 to be John Luttrell Day in the city of Fresno.
So we have a couple other certificates that we'll be also recognizing other code enforcement officers.
Thank you. So our code enforcement officers go through a training through KCO. You heard John reference KCO. It's the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And 23 of our code enforcement officers went through the training program, received the skills and training that they needed to get their certification, and so we wanted to acknowledge them, honor them, and recognize them today by providing them with their certificates. Up here with us is Tim Burns, one of our code managers, as well as Kevin Watkins and Phil Sky, our three code managers. I would like to also acknowledge, while I have the mic, Kevin Watkins, who was just recently voted in by the KCO membership to be a board member. So he is now one of the board of directors on the KCO Association, which is fantastic because he can be and continue to be a voice on that board for Fresno, just as Tim was last year. So without further ado, we'll just go ahead and get started in calling out names. If you can come up, get your certificate, and then just stay up here so we could take a group picture. That would be fantastic. Oh my god. So Lisa Casillas is getting her award today. Unfortunately, she is not able to be here. Next up to bat is Candy Gurriel. Joe Inojosa is not here. He actually is a brand-new father, and he's at home with his baby, so we want to acknowledge him anyway. Amber Rodriguez is also unable to be here today, but we want to recognize her. And Rosa Vasquez. I just once again want to thank the city council, as well as all of our code enforcement officers for entrusting me to lead this big team. Again, I feel very, very honored, and congratulations to all of you for earning your certifications.
Well, again, congratulations to this fantastic team and all your hard work. Fresno is a much greater city because of you and all your efforts on behalf of the city. So thank you again, and please keep up the good work. We love it. We love it. Next, we have a ceremonial presentation by Mayor Lee Brand. This is the proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Remember to wear your purple tie or anything purple today. Nicole, why don't you come up? Good morning. The city of Fresno has had a longstanding relationship with the Marjorie Mason Center. We consider her a strong community partner, and we support their vision for a community free of domestic violence. In 2018, at my State of the City address, Marjorie Mason Center was awarded the City Community Partner Award, and it was accepted by Nicole Lender, their executive director. As a city, we're grateful for the many years the Marjorie Mason Center has provided shelter and support services for victims of domestic violence. It is the only dedicated provider of comprehensive domestic violence services in the city and the entire county. Last year, more than 6,000 adults and children received their services, and I can tell you, it's an ongoing struggle that needs our full support as we go forward. So it's my honor to sponsor proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And before I have the clerk read the proclamation, Nicole, say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Brand, and all council. I do appreciate all the support each and every one of you give, not only for us as an agency, but individually within your district, because you all know that domestic violence is an issue in every single district in our community. Tragically, this weekend, there were two near fatal domestic violence incidents, and we continue to see this plague our community. At the Marjorie Mason Center, we firmly believe that domestic violence will end with each and every one of us saying that healthy relationships start with us. And so our encouragement during Domestic Violence Month is that each and every one of us take an opportunity to take an inventory about anything that we may be doing that contributed to that, knowing that we all have a solution to ending it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. This past year, the state of California provided money for homeless services. I tried to advocate for separate funding for domestic violence, which was not successful, but I believe domestic violence is an integral part of homelessness. And this coming year, as a big 13-mayors meeting in Sacramento and Washington, D.C., I'll be advocating for more direct funding to domestic violence and programs like Marjorie Mason Center. So city clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Whereas domestic violence impacts countless individuals without regard to age, race, religion, or economic status. As victims suffer at the hand of a spouse or a partner, it affects their children, families, and entire community. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 12 million men and women in the United States each year, and it is the most traffic level, kills an average of three women every day. And whereas over 7,000 domestic violence calls are made to the Fresno Police Department alone each year, and is Fresno County's only dedicated provider of domestic violence safe housing and support services, Marjorie Mason Center serves over 6,000 individuals affected by domestic violence each year. And whereas each October, the formal recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month allows the community to acknowledge and show the support for survivors and advocate for the end of the cycle of abuse through education. And whereas a partnership of organizations has emerged to directly confront this crisis and are achieving success, the Marjorie Mason Center, along with law enforcement, healthcare providers, clergy, and concerned citizens, are helping in the effort to end domestic violence. We must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals and increase public understanding with this important problem. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Lee Brand, and the members of the Fresno City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens of Fresno to work together to end the cycle of violence in our community.
Good man. Would the city council members all please come down and get your ribbon and take a picture? Next, we're going to celebrate the wearing of my pink ribbon here, as well as our pink proclamation. This is to bring awareness, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the nation, and we want to invite Aline and James to come up and join us. Good morning and welcome to our council meeting. Good to see you.
Good morning.
Thank you. And with that, each and every year, I participate in this for a very personal reason. My mother had breast cancer and did a double mastectomy, and I'm happy to say that November 13th, she'll be 93 years old, and I'm so blessed to have her in my life each and every day. So it's very emotionally important to me, as well as to our entire community, but I wear this pink very proudly.
I also just want to express my gratitude to the work that Susan G. Komen and the foundation they do. I think awareness and education is crucial, early detection, which is one of the issues that they promote, because we know that women... one of the issues that they promote, because we know that women, even at the, at early ages, can be impacted. So, we want to encourage the early detection. There are various community health clinics, or even like Planned Parenthood, where folks can go to get free or low-cost early detection. So, I want to thank you guys for the work that you guys do, and give you guys an opportunity. I know that you guys have something coming up at Fresno State to talk about.
Yeah, this Saturday, we have our More Than Pink Walk happening at Fresno State. We have in-person registration tomorrow and on Saturday at 7:30 in the morning, and we are excited to have this event be back at Fresno State. And we also changed it from a race to a walk, so, but it'll still be the same concept.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the City of Fresno and also the chamber members for presenting us with this today. As a father of a daughter who passed away last year of breast cancer, we're, and a board member, I'm a board member for Susan G. Komen in northern, central California. We are committed to Fresno and central California, and to ending breast cancer, hopefully in the near future. So, we appreciate this very much, because the work we do is very important. And breast cancer will affect, unfortunately, several people in this, in this auditorium today in their lifetime. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again for your work. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is celebrated across the nation during the month of October as a reminder to the constant fight against this disease, it is a time where we honor all those who have lost their lives to breast cancer, and we recognize the courageous survivors that are still fighting it today. And whereas breast cancer is one of the most common cancers diagnosed in women, and also one of the leading causes of cancer-related deaths, the City of Fresno encourages its citizens to join in the fight to educate their communities about the early detection and treatment, as it can help save many lives. Educating women about the seriousness of this disease by promoting their regular self-check breast exams, mammograms, and clinical breast exam in order to detect cancer in its early stages is essential. And whereas fundraising for breast cancer across, excuse me, fundraising for breast cancer access, research, and cures is crucial, because one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. Every 13 minutes, one woman in the U.S. loses her life to breast cancer. There are no boundaries. Breast cancer affects people of all ages, gender, social, economic status, and location. At the current rate, 13 million breast cancer deaths will occur in the world in the next 25 years, so we must take action. And whereas the Susan G. Komen Foundation provides an annual More Than Pink Walk, which raises significant funds for the breast cancer movement. Each year, supporters and survivors take action by stepping up to participate and volunteer at the annual walk. This year's goal is to raise $100,000 to help breast cancer victims. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno, Mayor, and City Council does hereby proclaim October 2019 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
Thank you all very much. Quite a morning. Next is council member reports and comments, if you'll please. There you go. Excuse me, Member Carbasi.
President, I want to congratulate Aldi Dodds for being promoted to Deputy City Manager. My office is looking forward to working with her. Unfortunately, though, the city did lose an employee with the Fax Department, our Fax Maintenance Storekeeper, Steve Andrade, so please keep his family in your prayers. I was really honored to represent the council at the Big Fresno Fair for the opening ceremony. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for that. And I want to thank Councilmember Soria for being up there with me, as well as our City Clerk and our Police Chief Jerry Dyer, for the 136th anniversary of the Big Fresno Fair. And I hope all of you are going to go this weekend. I did meet with Kaiser Area Manager to learn about some of the projects they have going. The Kaiser Foundation does invest a whole lot in our community all over the city, and I'm hoping they're going to make some investment in the district as well. But, you know, one thing I did was meet with the residents west of the 99. They have very unique challenges, and with the opening of the first phase of Veterans Boulevard, we're really excited that it's going to open up a lot more opportunities. And when it's completed, so long as we continue to develop infrastructure along the major corridors like Ashland and Shaw, and working with the COC to do that, that it's going to, you know, be a big boom for the, for the west side. Lastly, in addition, I would like to ask the President if we can adjourn also in the memory of Ray Ensher, who passed away a day after his 85th birthday. He was a supporter of cinema and the arts, and he was a real local champion for equality. Thank you.
That's, absolutely. Knew Ray very well, and he was, he was a character. He will be missed in our community for sure. Anybody else? I'll close it. If not, Member Soria.
Just very quick, I do want to thank our Public Works Department. I know that we had an opportunity to meet earlier this week, and excited to just report that District One will start seeing some work when it comes to tree trimming. I know that there's a lot of neighborhoods that for a lot of decades have not seen their trees trimmed, and so that is exciting to me, because I think this council made a commitment in this budget cycle to add additional dollars. So, I want to thank Public Works staff for taking the time to meet with our office. Also, just want to make sure that folks know that Saturday, October 19th, we have our Fall Festival at Inspiration Park. It will be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be free food, informational booths, music, and a movie in the park, featuring How to Train Your Dragon: The Hidden World. We ask folks to bring their long chairs or blankets, because it may be a little chilly. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, October was a really busy month for District Four. Here are a few of the items that we, we were engaged in this past, current month. So, October 1st was National Night Out at Wesley Church. This is an annual event in the Eldorado Park neighborhood. We had many people participating, and want to thank our partners, Wesley Church, Northeast Police Department, Fresno State Police Department, Fresno State ASI, our Parks Department, our City Attorney, and our code people that we honored earlier this morning. So, we love to see the interaction between the public service officers in our community, and the kids, and the families in the Eldorado Park areas. It really creates a relationship that's hard to, hard to break that bond, but you got to create that bond, and this is one of the ways we've been doing it. I want to thank McDonald's at Cedar and Shaw. We had, they hosted our National Coffee with a Cop on October 2nd. We had a great crowd, and again, want to thank the Northeast Policing District for continuing to do these events. Again, it's another opportunity for people to get to know people, and for us to all understand our roles and how we get along, and the kindness we need to share with one another. On October 5th, the Fresno Airport, along with the Arc, SkyWest, HP Hewlett-Packard, TSA, and many others, were able to provide an airport experience for autistic children. That's children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And this partnership allows the families and the childrens to someday connect with people out of the Fresno area. So, what happens is these kids go to the airport, they pack a bag, do everything as if they're going to fly to DC or Florida, Disney World, wherever. And they get to go through that experience with the noise and the atmosphere and the ambiance. It's pretty, pretty challenging at times. And then, these children are allowed to board the airplane with their parents. And then, SkyWest, they actually close the door, fire it up, and they take a tour of the airport, if you will, to give a full experience to these kids and their families. So, whenever they want to go on a vacation, they can remember that moment. There's photographs. They do a booklet of writing down what they felt, and how they enjoyed that moment. So, it would encourage them, and hopefully, enable them and their families to enjoy air travel, and the ability to, to come out of Fresno to different areas. Two more things. Sunday, October 6th, we had our Neighborhood Picnic at Sierra Madre. Thanks to all those who helped us gather and celebrate, that would be the mosque on 6th and Shaw. They're great partners. And then, finally, on October 8th, we again partnered with Wesley Church, Fresno Police Department, Danny Kim from the department, our Parks, Fresno State, and we launched Yoda. Yoda is Youth Outreach Through Art Program. And this program allows our youth to have a voice and express their feelings through art in a very friendly, warm environment with many people that encourage them to express themselves when they may not otherwise have that opportunity. So, it's quite a month so far for October for District Four. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. Is there, any council member like to pull an item for discussion from the consent calendar? If you'll please push the button for request to speak. Seeing none, is there a motion, anyone in the public, excuse me, anyone in the public wish to comment on the items on the consent calendar? If so, please come forward.
Second.
Seeing none, we'll bring it up here. A motion by Member Asparza, seconded by Member Arias. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go to our general admin. Item 3A, actions pertaining to cellular and FirstNet connectivity. This is the Fire Department.
I think our chief just walked out for a minute. Do you mind moving on to, I think we're moving quicker than she had anticipated. So, can we move on to the next item quickly?
Oh, I have a motion by Member Chavez.
Thank you, Chief.
We have a motion.
I love the entrance. Can you, yeah, very nice.
Chief, just so you know, we have a motion by Member Chavez, seconded by me, so please don't talk yourself out of a vote.
Yes, sir. Essentially, this is to bring connectivity to our engines and trucks with, through AT&amp;T and FirstNet. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone in the public wish to address this item? Please come forward. This is your opportunity to address the council and the public generally. Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment. The screen is clear. Motion by Member Chavez, seconded by me. Any opposition? Congratulations, it passes 7-0. Thank you. Item 3B, approve a lease purchase agreement with the Fresno Police, Fresno Fire Department. Chief, Donnis, you're, you're on the stage again.
Sure. This is a lease purchase agreement to purchase our aerial ladder truck. This was part of the eight-year apparatus replacement plan in the, in the budget you approved, and we're hoping you move forward with that.
Okay. We have a motion by the entire council, seconded by those that didn't make the motion. So, I should have more clarity.
You have one question, Chief, for you.
So, excuse me. So, we have a motion by Member Brettafield, seconded by Member Asparza. And then, we'll take it to the public real quick. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it to the council member Arias.
Can you explain to me why we're doing a lease purchase versus a straight purchase?
Bottom line is, not enough dollars. It's 1.4 million for a ladder truck, and that includes equipment. It just costs too much money, and there's too much need.
Okay, thank you.
Member Carbasi, thank you for pinching up.
Chief, I have a question for you. Sorry about that. It may be a better question for the City Attorney, but I'll have you up here anyway. So, we have, we're purchasing it in conjunction with Charlotte, North Carolina, which is a typical practice you guys do. Is there any way we can pay sales taxes from Charlotte, North Carolina, as opposed to California, because we'll save about $10,000? Is there any way that can be done?
No.
Okay. So, maybe California should reduce its taxes.
Yeah.
Well, we'll take the money from your district.
Following that line of questioning, I wonder if Sacramento's listening. Rarely do they listen to the Valley, but hopefully they are. And they can make some adjustments to the state tax for fire apparatus, for first responder apparatus and equipment, to encourage us to purchase more with more dollars that are taxed less for our public safety. So, hopefully, some legislators or their staff is listening, and will bring that forward to the governor, and see if that can be accomplished, so it can get more for less money.
Ideally, because there are no fire truck, fire engine builders on the west coast.
I wonder why. Well, that's probably a long discussion.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Screen is clear. We have a motion. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you. 6-0. Member Chavez absent. 3C, approve award of a purchase contract to Swanson-Farnie Ford for numerous police vehicles. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council. Gregory Barfield, Director of Transportation, asking the council approve the purchase of 25 police SUVs from Swanson-Farnie Ford, the lowest bidder in this endeavor. Our next go-around, as you note in the staff report, I'm just going to say it for the record, we are going to pilot five hybrid SUVs, because they come out in 2020. So, there'll be one in every district. So, we do look forward to that.
Thank you. Take it out to the public. Anyone in the public want to comment on this? Step one up. Love to have, hear from you. That would be, public comment is closed to the dais, Member Arias. Yeah, we have a motion by Member Brettafield. I'll second it. Member Arias?
Yes, ma'am. Director, can, I know Selma Ford received a bid based on the lowest bid.
Yes.
Isn't there a local preference city policy that we're supposed to give local preference for dealers in this area?
Well, this, this would fall under local preference.
Selma is considered local preference for us?
The, the issue I think you're asking is why, is about Lithia and Future, who refused to bid on our projects.
Understood. Thank you.
Screen. Mike.
Director, a quick question for you.
Yes.
Is this the same, is it, are these Ford Explorers, or is this a whole different model?
This is Ford Explorers.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Asparza.
Greg, you, in, in previous presentations, you had advocated, not necessarily in the Police Department vehicles, but I think in other departments, you'd advocated for the lease, and here we have purchase. Could you kind of give us a rundown of the economics of the difference here?
The economics is, we will run this vehicle through its entire lifecycle. So, you're looking at 200, 250,000 miles we will put on these vehicles. It's not worth a lease.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Screen is clear. We have a motion, and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 7-0. Thank you. 3D, authorization or resolution authorizing submission of the Public Works Fancher Creek Trail Plan and Fax Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Planning. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President, Council members. My name is Shelby McNabb. I'm the Grants Administrator with the Department of Public Works. The item before you today is a resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications to the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Planning Program. The city proposes two grant projects, the Fancher Creek Trail Plan and the Fax Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Planning Project. The Fancher Creek Trail Plan will develop a concept design for trail facilities from Johnson to Temperance, and the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan will evaluate zero emission buses and charging facilities to comply with the California Air Resources Board electric vehicle requirements. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the grant applications. This concludes my presentation, and I will be available, as will Fax, for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Perfect presentation. Appreciate that. Anyone in the community wish to come forward and comment on this item? Please do so. We'll close public comment. We have a motion by Member Chavez, seconded by Member Brettafield. Is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you. We have a resolution adopting complete streets policy sponsored by Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a motion to approve- We have a motion to approve by Member Brettafield, seconded by Member Chavez.
I'm Jill Gormley. I am the Traffic Operations Planning Manager with the Public Works Department, and the item before you today is a citywide complete streets policy. And I prepared a short presentation to just summarize the policy for you. So a complete street is defined as a transportation facility that is planned, designed, operated, and maintained to provide safe mobility for users of all ages and abilities. And really what that means is it's a street that can be used by vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, and usually has facilities such as sidewalks, bike lanes, streetlights, and transit service. The purpose of this policy is to solidify current practices and ensure consistency in planning, designing, and construction of our transportation facilities. It's also a tool that can be used to strengthen our grant processes. The vision of this policy, wherever possible, is to provide opportunities for the citizens to choose a mode of transportation. And while this policy does not prioritize projects, it does use existing tools such as the Active Transportation Plan and Active Transportation Plan Prioritization Tool to help identify facilities and amenities that can create complete streets throughout the city. And finally, this policy is a commitment to approach all projects as an opportunity to create safer, more accessible streets for all users. A complete street is a street that can be used by a diverse set of users of all ages and abilities. There may be users that want to ride or need to ride the bus, they want to drive a car, they want to or need to walk, they need to make deliveries, they need to or want to ride their bikes, and a complete street provides opportunities for all these types of users. This policy would apply to both city projects and developer projects. And what you have in front of you right now is an example of a recent city maintenance project. This is Sierra, east of Maroa. It's a four-lane road, or was a four-lane road, excuse me, and the project was simply to provide a slurry sale. We looked at this project, and we saw that the street has sidewalks, it has streetlights, but it didn't have bike lanes. So we did look at traffic volumes, we coordinated with the county, and we saw the opportunity to reconfigure the road to be able to add bike lanes to the roadway. This is a recent example of a developer project. The picture on the right, or excuse me, on the left, is a picture of Copper Avenue looking east towards Chestnut. It's pretty vacant. There's no, no streetlights, there's no sidewalks, there's no bike lanes. The picture on the right shows the conditions that the developer were required to comply with with the construction of their apartment complex. So out at this location right now, we have sidewalks, we have streetlights, we have bike facilities, and it's more of a complete street. And you can see the difference between what it was before and what it was after. And while our commitment is to make as many streets as complete as we can, we've also recognized that there may be instances when this is not going to be possible or will have considerable hurdles to overcome. So we've identified in the policy some exceptions, and there's different levels of exceptions. These exceptions are identified as needing director approval. And some of these are if something is prohibited by law or an adopted city plan. An example of that would be Herndon Avenue's expressway. We don't allow bicycle lanes on Herndon Avenue. Also, we've got facilities identified in our Active Transportation Project. If they're not identified in the plan, then they may not, they may be an exception to providing those facilities with a project. Other examples that would be able to be exempted by the director would be ordinary maintenance or repair activities if the parcel is developable. And a good example of that was that previous example of the apartment complex on Copper Avenue. I know I personally received a lot of requests to put in sidewalk, to put in streetlights. We knew that that was going to be a parcel developed by a developer, and that was all forthcoming, so we didn't, we didn't go out to try to pursue, excuse me, money to install those facilities. Sometimes project is restricted because of the grant funding sources. If a project is, if a complete street project is already have funding allocated and it's within five years. An example of that would be Olive Avenue right now, is there's a street skate project happening. It's in the design stage, so we wouldn't seek funding or make improvements to that area right now because we know that they're forthcoming with this project. Also, that the postponement of an improvement would not be contrary to public health, safety, or orderly development. In addition to the exemptions that could be approved by the director, we've identified some that would need to be brought before this body for approval. That would be if the cost to install bikeways or walkways would be disproportionate to the project costs, and then the policy identifies 20% as being that threshold, and if there is an absence of both a current and a future need. This policy is not changing the authority of the Planning Commission to approve, modify, or delete conditions of approval included as part of, also those included as part of this complete street policy. And finally, the implementation of this policy identifies 10 different measures so we can gauge the success of creating complete streets throughout the city. They include an annual performance report that would be brought before council, listing things like the number of curb ramps that we've installed, the number of streetlights we've installed, number of bikeways, the miles of, or the linear feet of sidewalks. And it also asks our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meetings, excuse me, members to discuss the complete street needs of each one of your districts and your goals and report back to staff on an annual basis. And that concludes the presentation. Staff is recommending that the council approve the complete streets policy, and I am available for questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So any member of our community like to come up and talk? This is the time. You have three minutes. Why don't you give us your name and your address? Seeing none, public comment is closed. First up is Member Arias.
Thank you, Steph. I just want to start off with some context. I don't know if the public remembers, but we had a pretty big public fight a few months ago over the gas tax dollars. And the context of that is that a lot of our streets were being re-slurried, repaved, but we were walking by and driving by the fact that there was no sidewalks, streets are gutters, and those were not being done at a time that we're spending millions of dollars in repaving streets in South Fresno. I still have a handful of schools that don't have any sidewalks adjacent to them, and we repaved those streets multiple times and re-slurried and kind of walked by because of the cost of putting those sidewalks in place. The photos that you guys depicted are all of areas of new growth where development can afford to put in all the infrastructure because it's, you know, half million dollar homes. In some cases, in South Fresno, these portions of the city were annexed 50, 70, 80 years ago, and they still don't have sidewalks adjacent to schools. So I'm very happy that the staff has brought forward a really comprehensive policy to ensure that that doesn't continue going forward. I think we're one of the only cities in the area that hasn't had a complete streets policy in place, which got us to this point. But I do have concerns with a couple of the provisions that you guys outlined. On the first one is the discretion and the exemptions that the director has. Can you give me an example of when the director would utilize their discretion to determine that it's not a safety hazard to not put a sidewalk in a neighborhood that doesn't We can go back to that slide. There you go, the last provision. Because as I read it, if the director identifies as an exemption, it would never come to the Planning Commission or the council, and we would essentially be approving a street improvement without a sidewalk, street, or gutters if the director determined that it was a health or safety hazard.
I will start out by saying, you know, we would like to have sidewalks and bike lanes wherever we can. I think maybe in an example of maybe this exemption where it would apply would be in a neighborhood where there's sidewalk on one side of the street already. Yes, we would like to have sidewalk on both sides of the street, but maybe that's not possible because of the right-of-way gains, or maybe the residents don't want that sidewalk through their, their, their front yards. It's not really a reason, not a safety reason, but there is, there are facilities on that street. So I think that that could be an example of when that exemption would be made.
Okay. Just as, that's of grave concern to me because there's, you're essentially describing half of South Fresno where there are sidewalks on one side of the street, there's clearly a busy street, you have to cross to get to the school. On the other side, there is no sidewalk, especially as you get to this centrinofied neighborhoods where we're annexing block by block and the schools are at the far end of the development. I would consider that a safety hazard if we're requiring kids to cross the street when there's no crosswalk, there's no intersection lights, if the director was to use that discretion. So for me, I think that's the kind of presentation and rationale that the staff should have to come to a council and fully inform us of it, because we get, in these community meetings, a yearful from the residents that we're approving development, sidewalks are not going in, streets and gutters are not going in, and kids are having to walk busy rural roads or sometimes urban areas to be able to find a sidewalk. So I'm a little concerned about that provision. The other provision I'm concerned about is in the next couple of slides related to the Planning Commission. As I understand the policy, we are holding city staff to a higher standard. You guys are holding yourselves to a higher standard when it comes to making sure we build a complete street. The council is holding itself to extremely high standard because we only allow ourselves two exemptions essentially, but the Planning Commission continues to have full authority to exempt any development from complete streets. As a reminder, which, the Planning Commission is not elected, the Planning Commission doesn't have people from South Fresno on the commission, so it's very alarming to me that we would give this not-elected body full authority to exempt projects from having to approve a complete street when we're trying to hold the whole city to a different standard. So, city attorney, what do we need to do to not give the Planning Commission that authority?
Well, first of all, if we're talking about subdivision map approval, those are ultimately approved by the council anyway. Second, decisions of the Planning Commission are appealable to the council by either the council member of that district or the mayor, so that helps. Otherwise, we could modify the municipal code to directly address it if you'd like.
Okay. Thank, I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission gets a very clear message that they should not be approving subdivision maps that don't adhere to complete street standard that the city is going to hold itself to. And I know we can appeal their decisions, but that just means more work for us on the council on the back end and having to deal with residents who are upset about half a street being built. Thank you.
Member Asparza.
Yes, a question for staff. What is the level of consistency between this policy and the Southern Blackstone Mobility Project? Are there any conflicts?
No, there would be no conflicts.
So it's, I mean, if this was, the Southern Blackstone Mobility Project is in complete compliance and consistency with this policy already?
Yes. Really, any project that comes through, we look at it through these lenses. We are always trying to put sidewalks, bike lanes, all the amenities, it's part of our standards on every project. This won't change the Blackstone Mobility Strategy Plan. It just, I feel it enforces, or it, it makes it more, it makes it stronger that this is our commitment and this is, this is how we want our streets to develop.
Great.
All right. Member Soraya, followed by Member Chavez.
Thank you, Council President. I have a question in terms of that 20%. How did you guys come up with the 20% potential exception to the policy?
We looked at costs of projects and costs of different components of projects, and we felt that 20% was a good level to include, to bring forward to this body to make exceptions to it. You know, conversely, if it's under 20%, we're going to, we're going to put in those improvements. You know, we're going to try to find that money to make sure that those improvements are put in with a project.
Yeah, so I just, I find it a little hard to kind of accept just that 20% because it seems like we don't have a real methodology. Have you guys looked at other local cities and what they've done? Do they have similar exemptions? I'm just curious, because I know that there's a number of cities that have adopted a complete streets policy, and I'm just wondering, did we take a look at that? Maybe cities that are similar to the city of Fresno, like Bakersfield or any of the other Central Valley larger cities?
Sure. I, when we were preparing the policy, we did research cities throughout the United States and their policies for best practices and what they were using. And I don't remember seeing an exact percentage in there. There may have been, but I can't answer that question right now as far as seeing 20% or seeing 10% or 50%. I don't, I don't remember that.
I'd like to see if we can maybe get a little bit more information. I don't know if this is time-sensitive, but I'd like to kind of do a compare and contrast. I want to make sure that we're using some guidance in terms of best practices that have worked in other cities before we just slap on and say, we're going to do 20% because we think that that's the magic number. I'd like to kind of look at what other cities are doing.
Member Chavez, followed by Member Carbasi.
Thank you, President. I have a question for the, for the discretion of the department head. So, as you know, Southeast has a lot of areas where it's, one side it's county, one side it's city. How would this be interpreted in that situation where there's a development project on the city side, but right across the street, there's a county? So how would, how would this complete streets model fit into that development?
If it's a developer project in the situation that you've described, we do work with the county to try to get as many amenities that we can. If the right-of-way is in the county's jurisdiction, they ultimately have the authority to say yes or no to that. They do have different standards than we do, but we do work with them to try to make those projects happen. If there's a nexus to require that of the developer, we can, we can do that. We are doing that, say with traffic signals in some parts of town that are not in the city right now. They are in the county, and we are asking that development projects install those signals because of the impacts that their projects are creating. So it is a possibility that we can work with the county to get some of these amenities.
And what I'm trying to hone in is on, so say, for example, and Scott knows about this area on Armstrong and Butler, that parcel where we have some drainage issues going on there. So right across the street, there's a county parcel. If this site were developed, I want to be thoughtful and not pigeonhole our staff to say, well, if this project is built, then we have to mandate, you know, a sidewalk across the street where now it's a private property owner that lives on the county that might not want that amenity on their side of the street. So how would that play out with this streets model?
I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the specific example that you're referring to, but we do, we do work with, with the county. We would work with the property owner in that instance to see if.
You have that flexibility within this complete streets model, Scott? That's what I'm trying to hone in on, make sure we have that flexibility.
Yes, good morning, Council. Scott Moser, Public Works. Yes, within the policy, we do have that flexibility. The practice typically has been with the county in developing areas. If we can annex that, that side of the street, the full street right-of-way into the city, then, then obviously, we can implement the full sidewalks. The county will typically, generally, the county has said, no, they will not accept or maintain sidewalks in county jurisdiction. Sometimes even, I'll give an example of the Peach Avenue project from 180 down to Kings Canyon. There were sidewalks and bike lanes built in the county. The city had to step up and say, we will maintain those in perpetuity in the county's jurisdiction to be able to implement the complete streets. jurisdiction to be able to implement the complete streets. So yes, we, we are seriously working at that, making it happen wherever possible.
That's what I'm trying to hone in on. I'm trying to get, I know we're trying to codify this plan, and so I want us to get, have the flexibility to have that conversation with the county because you're very familiar with, you know, Minnewawa and half of it being the city, half of it being the county. So I think it requires us to have a more complete conversation with the county, and I think this is something we can flag as part of other conversations. I just want to make sure that whatever we approve is not going to restrict you from doing that and having that conversation. And then on the exceptions for the complete streets element, what, what does staff interpret to mean absence of both a current and future need? You could hone in on that.
Let's, Jill Gormle will handle the question.
Trying to see what number slide it is.
So that would be an exemption that we would bring back to this body to make a determination for, you know, complete streets are for people to walk. It's, it includes transit, it includes bicycles. The best example maybe that I can think of that, where that would apply is maybe the, a request for transit services into an area that, that doesn't have the ridership right now or sidewalks built where there's really not a destination at the end or beginning or the end of a sidewalk. That would be something that we would bring back to this body to decide if that is an appropriate exception to make to the policy or if it should be constructed.
And I understand that it'll come back to the body, and I, I, I'd like for that to be the case, but I'm trying to get a better understanding on what we interpret to mean absence of both a current and future need. So for example, the bus situation you cited. So we have areas that we know there's a demand for bus service, but we don't have bus service there currently, and so I just want to make sure that we're not using that absence of bus service to say we won't provide bus service in the future. Does that, does that, does this policy prohibit that?
No.
Okay.
No, I think it would apply to the project that would be in front of you at the time, and is that a reasonable or a amenity that needs to be done with that specific project at the time?
All right. So for, just last thing, for example, a, a development that would have X amount of homes, now that would trigger a conversation about what kind of public transportation infrastructure the city would put in there as well? Is that part of our conversation that we're having right now?
Yes, and that's always part of our conversation with any development that comes through. We're looking at what improvements that development would need to make to, to mitigate or to take care of the impacts that they are creating on the transportation system.
And that's probably more a conversation for Greg, but I'll, I'll chat with him offline about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Karbasi.
You know, this week you reached out to the office and to see if you have any questions. I want to thank you for doing that. Unfortunately, I thought of my questions after you did that. So, a couple of things. Have we surveyed, surveyed people in the city to see how they feel about modes of transportation, specifically in my district, for example, and see what the different tastes are? Because here's my concern. We're elected to serve our districts. We go out there and we talk to people at the door and we hear what they, what they want, and every district is a little bit different. I may work with council member Soria, for example, to do some road diet on Palm and have maybe cycle track or things like that, and that's fine because we're out there and the residents will go to us if they have a problem with it. But what if it's another street in my district? Will this automatically have a road diet and lead to congestion which can hurt commerce and commute times for residents? Or will we still have full authority as council members?
Yes, and the examples of road diets, we always like to bring those back to the individual council representative to make sure that they are okay with changes that we are making and, and so that you understand why we are proposing, say, a road diet. So yes, that would be something that would, we wouldn't just go out there and, and do it. We might draw up plans and bring it to you and have a discussion with you, decide whether that goes forward or not.
Last question, I think this was asked earlier. How time-sensitive is this?
It's not time-sensitive.
Thank you.
Screen is clear. Okay, for the second time. Member Arias.
I, I just want to caution this body with, with one factoid. When we built Amazon, we could have at that time required them to build a complete street. We didn't. The city staff, the planning commission, and the council allowed that development to go on without a complete street. Now, we're building a complete street at a much higher cost that we're having to absorb. I, I want to make sure that, that reality is limited going forward, and I'm still concerned that the planning commission has the full authority to allow that to go forward and that we then have to play catch-up by appealing it and fixing it after the fact. And part of my concern is, in my view, nobody in the planning commission represents South Fresno, lives in South Fresno, or understands the challenges in South Fresno. So we're gonna continue to give them full authority. That makeup of that body needs to change.
I, I just had one brief comment. We're talking about partnership with the county on joint efforts to repair sidewalks, roads, et cetera. I just asked that we also communicate with Clovis. Winery in my district, half of it is paved, Clovis side, our side isn't, and if we were able to communicate, we probably could have got that done together. So if we could, in the future, try to communicate with Clovis on what they're doing with our boundaries and their boundaries, I'd appreciate that. So thank you. We have a motion by Member Brettafield, seconded by Member Chavez. Is there any opposition? Passes seven zero. Thank you. Next, ours, our 10 o'clock item. This is a hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of North Colonial Avenue and West San Jose in Council District Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, council members and staff. My name's Jason Cammott, chief surveyor, Public Works Department, City of Fresno. I'm here today to ask council to open the required public hearing for a vacation of a portion of North Colonial Avenue and West San Jose Avenue. This hearing was set by Resolution of Intent Number 1133D, which was approved by consent on September 26, 2019. This vacation is being requested by the ACME group. The purpose of this vacation is to accommodate development for the Fig Garden Center expansion, which has already gained approval for a plan amendment and rezone. At this time, I ask council to open the public hearing for comment, and I will be available for questions.
Thank you. We'll do just that. This is the opening for a public comment. Anyone from the community that wishes to dialogue on this item, please come forward. Give us your name and address, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Roberts. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm here representing the ACME group. The address is 1396 West Hernan in the City of Fresno, Suite 110. We are the applicant and have requested this action here today. I want to state for the record that we do concur with the recommendation of staff and with, I'd like to also thank staff for their efforts. This entire project has taken a little bit over a year, and we've been working both with DARM and Public Works and Public Utilities staff throughout that time. I also want to thank the members of the neighborhood in this Fig Garden area. We have worked very closely, have had several large meetings, have attended meetings in homes, in clubhouses, across the street, in the Fig Garden Village. We've had just an awful lot of interaction, and I appreciate everyone's input. The action today that's contemplated and recommended by staff is consistent with the District Two recommendation, which was unanimous. It's consistent with the airport land use commission action, which was unanimous, with your planning commission's recommendation, which was unanimous, and with your recent recom, or your recent approval of the land uses, which was also a unanimous action. If you approve this today as requested by us and by staff, this allows us to move forward with the development permit for the Fig Garden Expansion project, with the landscaping plans, with the, obviously, the infrastructure plans, and with plans for two parks that were recommended throughout this process that will be built by us and maintained by our operation. This, this vacation of a portion of San Jose was actually started back in 1989 when Gunner and Andros started the project, the Fig Garden Expansion project, and this is consistent with that action. So again, I'd like to thank you for the time here today, appreciate your support, and we would ask that you make the, take the recommendation of staff. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. I have a card from Stephen with the Village Homeowners Association. Stephen, give us your name and address. You have three minutes, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Steve Reddick. I live at 450 West San Ramon Avenue, just south of the proposed project. I'm also the president of the Fig Garden, excuse me, Fig Garden Homeowners Association with, consists of 69 households just south of the project. I'm here today to speak in favor and also concur with staff recommendations in support of the proposal as it, it helps us maintain what we refer to now as our sense of place in the Fig Garden area. So with that, I think I'll just close. I, but we, we stand in support as we have before for the project.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward, talk about this? Please do so. Give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning. Carolyn Nolan, 482 West San Ramon, number 102 in Village Gardens. We circulated a letter of support for this project in our community. There are 69 units. We got 62 people to sign in favor of this. We submitted this to the planning commission, and I believe that, that our letter of support is part of the paperwork for this project. So we are in support of the vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Community participation is greatly appreciated by this council. Anyone else wish to come forward? Please give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours.
Pardon?
Said, please give us your name and address, and three minutes of time is yours.
My name is Carol Melbantian.
If you'll pull that mic right down in front of you, that microphone right there, right on, pull it hard, it'll come right down.
I gotta read my notes.
There you go.
Um, I live at 477 West San Jose. I've submitted a letter to the city council, and I hope you have read it, but I want to address a couple of more items to that. First of all, I don't know if you're aware of this, but this is the fifth time that a project has been proposed for this area. I have to ask, how many times do the residents have to fight for their neighborhood? While they did prevail previously, those that are still in the area are just plain tired of it. This project is very different. It consists of the building of a four-story office complex and parking. This would be for the benefit of one entity only, while the area residents would have to give up access and traffic circulation that they have used for many years. I learned of today's hearing by accident, as I was told by staff, that the only residents that are required to receive notice are the adjacent property owners, and we all know who that is, at least the majority of, is the project builder. Now, I didn't bring up another item, but I did mention in my letter, but since others have talked about it today, I want to bring it up. And it's the 62 people that have approved this project in these Village Garden condominiums, and that is the fact that they will have access both ways from Palm to Maroa and Maroa to Palm, while if the streets are vacated, the rest of us will not. So anyways, I just wanted to add that in while I wasn't planned to speak about it, but I did mention it in my letter. Now, this brings me to another important item, SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. There are a couple of issues that I believe have not been addressed adequately. The first is being the commutative effect of the other projects in the neighborhood. Currently, there is 19 condos and 44 apartment residential units either started or to be started. They are building, they are built right across the street from each other on San Jose and about an eighth of a mile from the new project. With the planned cul-de-sac on San Jose, all the traffic from the 63 new units and those of the other residents on San Jose would only have one way to go down San Jose to Maroa. The second SEQA item has to do with physical division of an established community. If closing off the streets and taking possession of them and sticking a four-story building in the middle of the street isn't one, I don't know what is. Lastly, do we really need more office and parking space in the area? We need more green space. I have a novel idea. Scrap the plans, leave the streets intact, build a neighborhood park where the parking lot is planned, and a community or dog park on the other vacant lot. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. Anyone else in the community want to come forward? Please give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
My name's Jaime Loza. I'm homeless. You know what? I don't like discrimination. I don't like certain things, and what I seen is, they got, dude got on her real hard, you know, earlier, and the development people, I like to see them get hard on everybody asking for money because I agree with that one lady, you know, we don't need that many offices, you know, we need parks and stuff like that. And this dude right here comes up here, and ain't nobody drilling him like he drilled her, you know, saying unacceptable this, that, that, and this, and do their homework. I mean, we had that one lady come up over here and, and show you guys that, you know what? She's not going to have access to a road, but 62 other people are. Okay? So I mean, if you're gonna do a homework on certain individuals and drill them, I think everybody should get drilled. Don't you guys, I don't like, I don't like, I don't like being, people being biased. You know what I mean?
Anyone else wish to comment on this? Please come forward. All right, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back here, and Member Karbasi, it's your district, you're up.
Thank you. So I am going to drill the applicant. Mr. Roberts, if you can come up here. So one thing I learned from the people that I met with and called my office is that, I had a lot of calls and overwhelming support. You met how, several times with the residents. Can you tell us about some of the mitigation measures that were taken in communication with residents, like the green space you're adding in the gate?
Certainly. Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Roberts again on behalf of the applicant. We had several neighborhood meetings back last year, September and October of last year is when they started. We held these in a very public forum. We sent out notices a thousand feet out, so there were quite a few people that, that got the notices. Couple of things we talked about were what type of, what benefits were there for the neighborhood, what mitigating measures? And a couple of these are, there are pedestrian gates that we're going to install, and we've committed to install with the site plan, that provide for new access and easier access to Fig Garden Village for the pedestrians that live in the area. There's a lot of people that walk in the area today, but they have to go out to Palm and then north on, or south on Palm to get to Fig Garden Village. This will provide a new way for them to access Fig Garden Village. Number two, the, at the district committee meeting and also at one of our meetings, there was a lot of talk about can you accommodate dog walkers through the area? Well, we can with the gates, but what came out was that we should install some parks, I'll say pocket parks, if you will, within the, within their gates that are secure and maintained by us. There'll be two of those, one that is, I'll say, pedestrian-oriented and one that's pet-oriented. So we have both of those. We look forward to working with the neighborhood to help design those, and a couple of folks have actually volunteered to be on a committee, if you will, to help design those features.
So there will be a pet-friendly park?
Pet-friendly park within our property boundary.
And, oh, so my understanding from staff is that because it's not like a plan amendment, you're not required to inform people within a thousand feet as people are used to, but you went above and beyond and didn't inform people around the neighborhood, correct?
We, we tried very hard, yes. We, we met with quite a lot of people throughout the last year on this project.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to approve, and.
Member Karbasi, motion to approve, seconded by Member Chavez.
I just want to add one thing. Oftentimes, in the past, there's a certain stigma about the relationship between the development community and neighborhoods. And what happened here with this development, this is the fifth time this is being done, but finally, it's being done the right way. This particular applicant met many times with neighbors, and you have members of neighborhood associations coming forward, talking about how they usually support it. I was expecting all kinds of opposition, but not in this case because they made an effort to mitigate, and that's the key word. If we're going to have smart growth in Fresno. If we're going to have smart growth in Fresno, part of that includes the developer making an effort to be a smart developer and work with the neighborhood, and I'm grateful to this applicant for having done that above and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Arias, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Matter passes seven-zero. Thank you very much. Next is a ten-ten scheduled communication, appearance by Robert L. Abrahamian to discuss the bus stop situation. Please come forward, sir, give us your, your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Peace be with you. My name is Fernando Paul Elizondo. I live at 1293 North Echo Avenue, Fresno, California. I'm here to share with you a victory that the Lord Jesus has prevailed. I have made my home into a sanctuary to help the poor, the needy, and those who are lost. Last month, I was cut off before I was able to make my presentation rudely by the city council. Today, I will make it brief. The victory of you can't beat City Hall has been defeated by Jesus Christ. Last month, the city of Fresno was defeated in a ruling in favor of the sanctuary, which the Antichrist tried to remove. Today, we are victims of the Antichrist. Don't be part of that. We are in our last days. You must be aware of that. This message is for the city council, not for nobody else. This victory was won without an attorney, without an attorney. That's proof that this was the act of God. Also, there is more to come. The reason why these people are homeless, these people are using drugs, if you give them no alternative, what can they do? The city of Fresno just rewarded the code enforcement for their job well done. I disagree. I feel that the code is actually the code extortion. They extort money from the dead, the living, and the poor. This, from this day on, I will no longer speak to you, not to the attorneys or none of you. I have given you a chance to speak and take action, you failed to do so. Now I have an attorney from Sacramento, happens to be a federal court attorney. That's who you will be dealing with in this conspiracy of extortion, fraud, directed by the commandeering of the code enforcement. I have found a solution where it would not cost the taxpayer any money to help the homeless, not cost the city of Fresno any money, and not cost the state of Fresno, I mean, the state of California.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
She cut me off again.
Yes, sir. Next will be David Love. You'll have three minutes, sir, to step up and have your time.
Well, you violated my constitutional right. I am a Vietnam veteran.
Thank you for your service, sir, but we have to follow the rules. We have to follow the rules, sir. Thank you. So next is David Love. You'll have three minutes as well, sir. Name and address.
My name is David Love, number four, the first bong since, building 429. Fifty-seven, oh-five, East Huntington, apartment 205. Voice all the way to Washington DC, to Sacramento, to United States of America, voicing out Satan Ministry, Terry the Dry Bone Satan, Judge Judy, daughter Terry. Voicing out their, their Satan radio station during the evening hours and also the morning Talking about Alex the Dry Bone Satan, talking about Richard the Dry Bone Satan of Dog Roast the Satan, Luis Pada the Dry Bone Satan, talking about Air Satan, just a black airplane that flies at all time. And here's, there's a guy that was voicing, they were asking for a mount a couple of weeks ago on Air Satan, we're talking about Air One. They're doing Dog Roast of Satans, this one guy with his wife that's speaking tongues of snakes of Satans. Also voicing out Scott that goes by the name Skim, calling a leech boy from the movie. Also, Amy from Seinfeld. For their racism, and how to pick on disparate childrens, disparate families. We talking about disparate black men elementary, disparate Saint Jew. Julia, Judge Judy's daughter Julia, that's Clinton Oliver III's wife. And their so-called Dog Roast of Satan, Satan Ministry. They might try to audio, but voicing for the people. Today's date, Friday, October 21, 2019, Terry tried to steal the day of the guidance from Jesus heaven, avoiding Jesus heaven as well. My name is David Love, number four, building 429. Machines are trying to block, and machines are the slowest from Satan history.
Mr. Love, can you wrap up your comments, please? Done? Thank you. Robert Abrahamian, I called that earlier. Are you here, sir? You're on the scheduled communication. This is not the time for unscheduled, but actually scheduled. So, our next scheduled communication is by Kelly Nellum, and then followed by Johnny Nellum to discuss the police department concerns.
I'm the boss, I go first.
Well, you are welcome to figure that out on your own. I'm not going to get into that. Thank you very much for the offer, but no thanks. I got a boss at home myself, so whatever.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of council. My name is Kelly Foster Nellum, and I'm standing before you on behalf of a good friend of mine and working colleague of mine. I just wanted to bring some matters of concern to your attention, because they are a matter of life and death. In my efforts to prevent any further death with respect to coworkers, I came before this council, because my personal feets to address this matter on my own, they, I guess they fell on deaf ears. So, this matter is regarding Charmaine Witten, who is my good friend and my working colleague. We work for the state of California. In our working environment, we have had some, we had a death with a spouse that had, an estranged spouse. I guess it wasn't taken very seriously, so my colleague was, she reported it as we are to do. She, two days later, she was found in the trunk of her car in our parking space, deceased. Another incident at work, when my colleague's daughter works with us as well, she was, broke up with her baby's father, whatever the case may be. He presented to the office, got past security with a Starbucks card, Starbucks bag. When they presented and got her closer to the counter, he splashed the hot coffee in her face. Well, then we have my colleague, broke up with her husband, she's going through some marital issues, they're resolving the marriage, but the spouse is aggressive and he's abusive. And so what I did, just in the, just for preventative maintenance, is I went to the Fresno City Police Department. I asked to speak with the interim chief, Chief Hall. When I got there, I was told by the clerk that he was unavailable. She couldn't call upstairs, so she gave me a number to contact him. I did so, and I did that in the lobby of the police department. Having done so, we were, I contacted Mercedes, she made every effort imaginable to make contact with the chief, she was unsuccessful, having, so I asked, give me any decorated cop, give me anybody. I was told that there was nobody in the police department with a strike, nobody that was there to assist us, to guide us, to tell us what preventative methods that we could take to prevent any further, you know, loss of life. I guess that, I don't think they took the matter as serious as I take this. I'm very passionate about the fact that people should all be allowed to feel safe in their homes, in their working environment, in our city. As a taxpayer, I don't feel like I should have ever walked into the police station and been told that there's nobody there to assist me. With all that aside, I contacted Captain Cooley. Captain Cooley gave me, he was off duty, he stated that he would have a sergeant call me back, which he did. Sergeant James Fowler contacted me at work. I expressed, shared all these issues with him, because there's a plethora of different incidents that, for whatever reason, with this new police system, have not been documented or recorded, but 911 calls are public information. So they've started from August the 2nd to present date. I share that with Sergeant Fowler. Sergeant Fowler listens to us, takes all the personal information, name, number, contact, you know, whatever else we could give him. He goes on to contact the estranged husband and leave a message regarding a sexual assault concern, and ask that Charmaine contact him back, but he left it on her ex-spouse's or soon-to-be ex-spouse's voicemail, which just added salt into a gaping wound and just heightened his conduct, his poor conduct. He has entered the residence, he has sexually assaulted her, he has done a number of things. He have breached the protective order, there's a lot of things that have gone into place. The chief did have us meet with a sergeant at the Southwest Station, we did so. A sting was put on, they apprehended this gentleman, only to detain him for three hours, and they used my coworker and my good friend Charmaine as bait to do so. The problem is, the case that they detained him for was not even a case that we made reference to, and it wasn't regarding her protective order, it was not regarding the sexual assault or any of those things, and then the...
You need to wrap it up, ma'am, you're in overtime, and then Mr. Allen can speak.
The detective for domestic violence, Toscano, never called me back, neither did any of the other sergeants that the chief asked to contact us, but Toscano, being the sergeant of domestic violence, he tells Charmaine that she has to wait six to eight weeks for him to determine whether she is believable in this, before he could write a case, before they could take a case number, and you have over forty-one calls? That is absolutely ridiculous, and it needs to be addressed, it needs to be taken seriously, because it's more than a matter of safety, it's a matter of her life and the fact that he's threatened to kill her and her children.
Thank you very much. Johnny, you have three minutes.
My name is Johnny Nellum, I understand. I got a feeling that some of this is falling on deaf ears down there, because I can kind of read body language up there, and when it comes to domestic violence, some of y'all to take heed. This was handled incorrectly. When she tried to get to the chief's office and nobody was available, then I asked her to go to the clerk's office, then the chief of police called me. The chief done everything in his power. He got hold of his men to get hold of Kelly to try to resolve this issue. He had his sergeant, see, we didn't deal with no rookies, this is some sergeants up above that don't know the rules of domestic violence in the city of Fresno. And three-quarters of the budget goes to police and fire. Then they tell us when they arrest this guy, it's not even on the computer, the incidents are nothing, because you got a new computer system and nobody knows how to work it. How much did you pay for that system that the police department has now? Couple million bucks? And nobody knows how to work it. When you call the chief back, you must have cut his phone off, because he ain't calling no more, and he ain't picking up the phone no more. Now, I'm hot at this, because what I need to know from you, I need a policy on how the police department handles domestic violence. This woman could have been killed. Her husband raped her at knife point, she wouldn't got a rape kit, and on her report, the police got a code on there. Don't worry about this, we got to see if this is believable. What are you talking about? Who is this, who's his name, this sergeant?
Toscano.
Toscano, who is he that can wait eighteen weeks to see if somebody's believable or not before he will pursue the case? Didn't she ask him, what am I going to do in these eight weeks? He said, well, do what you been doing, you have survived. This is not right. Mr. Brettafield, Mr. Carbasi, whomever, if it happened to one of your folks, you'd be highly upset, and I believe that if it happened in Fig Garden, it would have been handled entirely different. Now, please give me something that says how you handle domestic violence. Then the next time, I know what to do, and I won't get sore most of when I come before this council. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank both of you. Hey, Member Carbasi, you want to make a comment?
Sir.
Mr. Nellums?
I just want to thank you for, it's okay, I understand why you're emotional, domestic violence is an issue. Today's, we proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
And I just want to say, I'm going to, I'm going to commend the chief, because the chief, he immediately got hold of me after the city manager got hold to him, and the chief, chief done his job, he done what he was supposed to do. My only problem is, is this woman called the department ten or twelve times, and when they arrested this guy and it went into the computer, none of this was entered into the computer. And we were told it's because of the new system, it wasn't entered, so this guy was able to, they used her as bait to arrest him. Now, he's mad, because he know that they used her to arrest him, and once they arrested him, he gets out in thirty-five, forty minutes, because none of the stuff was put on the sheet in jail where a judge could look at it and say, oh, no, we can't let this guy go. So that, it fell through the cracks. And the only thing I'm asking is, give us a little old something here that, when domestic violence happens, this is the way we handle it. You know, I ain't, I ain't mad at too many people right now, but, but the chief was all right. I got to give him credit there. So if he, if he wouldn't, I'd be dancing on the table, I'd tell you about it, you know, so, but anyway, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
No, I really appreciate you coming forward. We are listening, all seven of us, and of course, everyone else here.
I just been out of place for a while, but I'm still back.
Right. You brought attention to an issue that is really important, that's domestic violence. So one of the challenges our police department faces is, there's still a stigma with people wanting to report. Our Marjorie Mason Center here in Fresno actually has a 24-hour helpline. We need to encourage people to actually reach out, because we put, the final, the final end of a domestic violence incident is when the police get involved, when there's, God forbid, a casualty or someone being hurt at a knife point. But if part of it is on us as well, north and south, all over Fresno, to encourage women to come forward, because oftentimes, the victim will recant, and it's part of domestic violence, and then the officers, their hands are tied, because then they can't do anything, because no one's pressing charges. That's kind of a difficulty that we have.
And I understand, but see, this woman came out ten or twelve times. And nobody took it serious, and if, when you talking about, you got to wait six to eight weeks to see if she's believable, and when she's got ten or twelve calls in there, come on, give me a little break.
If it, if it does help you, sometimes when I call Chief Hall, I have to wait too.
You're still coming, brother. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. And, and another thing real quick to add, um, and this is a frustration I think we all have. Our state unfortunately has changed the way that we incarcerate people and there's a lot more people out there now because of realignment and our jails are full. So when somebody's arrested, probably on a different charge because that's what they can stick and then they're let out, it's because we're overcrowded. So a lot of this comes from Sacramento and then we're facing it here at home. And I'm so sorry you're frustrated. I'm frustrated too and I understand.
And I understand that councilman and I understand what you're saying. See, this ain't my first rodeo. I've been here a long time. But the only thing I'm saying, if, 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 if a judge read a report where, where a person had raped a woman at knife point and all that stuff, he wouldn't be too quick to let them out in 45 minutes is what I'm saying. Okay. Thank you much. Appreciate it. I know you guys are busy and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Uh, member Arias?
Uh, police chief, can you come up? Can you clarify for us whether, um, individuals can walk into the police headquarters and file a police report?
Good morning. What was your question, sir?
Can anybody from the public walk into the police headquarters and file a police report?
Yes, they absolutely can. However, we do close at about 3 o'clock because of staffing issues.
So if anybody shows up between 8 and 3, um, they would be attended to and a police report will be filed onsite?
There's a, there's a phone outside of police headquarters where they would be connected to dispatch and we would dispatch an officer to the front, front of headquarters.
And is that the case in every substation or just the headquarters?
It's just at headquarters right now. Our substations, there's only three that have public windows, which is southwest, um, northwest and northeast. Um, we're, we're working on central to try to get a, a window placed at central so we can open up a public counter. We still do not have staffing to, to open up those windows, but we're using officers who have been injured in the line of duty and who are recovering to staff those windows mon- uh, actually seven days a week right now.
That makes sense. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. That concludes our scheduled communication portion. We'll go to the 10-05 matter, which is a hearing to consider adoption of the Elm Avenue Revitalization Strategy. This is Council District 3.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. My name's Drew Wilson with the Planning and Development Department. I'm here today to present the Elm Avenue Revitalization Strategy for you. This is the product of a Environmental Protection Agency area-wide planning grant. Um, I'm going to go through a couple of phases. One, what this document is. Two, how we got we, where we are today. And three, some of the key components of that document. So what is this document? First and foremost, it's not a zoning change and it's not a land use map. We call this a roadmap to development. So we're at square one. This plan identifies some key implementation actions for potential cleanups of catalyst sites along the Elm Avenue corridor. Identifies some potential partnerships and funding mechanisms. Two, for the long-term lead to development to revitalize the Elm Avenue corridor. So we're at stage one. This is building off of recent planning efforts, primarily the West Fresno Brownfields Action Plan completed in 2011, which identified the need for a more in-depth study on key areas in southwest Fresno, as well as the downtown neighborhoods community plan and the southwest Fresno specific plan, which identified some of the neighborhoods and the community members' key desires and implemented that through land use changes. So the area we're talking about today is shown above in two maps. It's bounded by California Avenue to the north, North Avenue to the south, Martin Luther King to the west, and 41 to the east. As you can see from the aerial depiction there, there's a lot of brown fields. And if you look at the map on the right, all the sites identified in gray are vacant or underutilized parcels. So there's a need to study this area. I'm going to give you some stats and statistics about the southwest Fresno, so everything I talk about is bounded within there. We don't have the, the statistics specifically for the project area, so there, we took them from southwest Fresno. Um, 83% of the households have families with children compared to 38 citywide. There's primarily Hispanic and African Americans. The median household income is nearly half of the city of Fresno and almost half of the Fresno County. With that, we had an economist do a leakage rate to see where some of the money is going out of there. Close to $40 million is leaving this neighborhood on a yearly basis and being spent elsewhere. As a lot of the plans previously identified, there's a need for community-serving retail and a need for some revitalization efforts. And that's what this plan is intended to do. So if we look at what's on the ground now in the project area, we have 14% are parks and community facilities, 16% is industrial, 35, so a very high percentage of residential, only 2% commercial, and 33% of the parcels are vacant. So when most of the, as you saw from the aerial, it's pretty apparent, most people would see that as a detriment to the community. What the Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield program does is it wants to flip the script on, uh, a lack of development and investment in an area, uh, through a roadmap or guidance to see development along key corridors. Oops, take a step back. So there's three phases to this project. Uh, first we did some background analysis. We worked with, uh, property owners and the community to come up with some site reuse and some corridor vision. And then we created the strategy itself. Throughout this entire process, a 22-member steering committee was involved. We met with property owners several times. We worked with students and we made sure that our outreach efforts were, uh, out of the norm of what we normally do. So how we did that was we wanted to make sure we engaged the community in any way possible. We worked with some local high school students and did a photo voice project where we taught them some photography skills, some public speaking skills, as well as what are brownfields? And they presented at our community kickoff. Uh, they also answered questions and they facilitated tables with the community members. We integrated into Earth Day on Elm, a, a celebration at the Maxiel Parks Community Center showcased some of the concepts we had. That was kind of the accumulation of a charrette with property owners and project staff. Um, and then also, you know, we had a, we had a workshop, which is standard for projects. Uh, we had a two-day charrette. We had individual meetings with property owners, but we integrated into a lot of existing meetings, so 15. We took the activities that we did at the workshop and we took them to churches, we took them to schools, we took them to community groups, and we had the residents identify what are some of the issues and opportunities along this corridor and what are some of the key development types. Um, we have those here and this was crucial to the development of our corridor vision as well as some of the site designs. So parks, complete street, affordable housing, and community-serving retail were identified as, by the residents. So the strategy itself now, it's broken into four parts and it's intended to be a playbook. Something that community members, uh, property owners, city staff could use, uh, for a long period of time. We identified key stakeholders and assigned them a symbol or a sticker and put that throughout the document. So if you were to pick up the document and you're a community member, you could see where you fit and you could look at the key implementation action items and how you could be of assistance to see the corridor come to fruition. All right, so let's go into the corridor vision and some of the, uh, site designs for the catalyst sites. So the primary concerns for the community was making sure they had access to parks. Water features was mentioned frequently, access to healthy foods, quality development facing Elm, and complete streets. The idea, the subject was talked about earlier. Uh, let's make sure we have good street trees. We have places where people can walk to. The streets that they walk on have good sidewalks and amenities that allows them, with the 83% families, to go out and enjoy themselves. The vision of the community is depicted graphically on your right and, uh, uh, with the vision statement on your left. They want to make sure that it's a place that identifies the community through a variety of murals and arts and signage. It's a place where a variety of stores are available so that people of all place, of all ages can go. It has a good connection with the surrounding neighborhoods and this is done through partnerships and innovation of, uh, strategies between the city and other partners. Now I'm going to look at the three catalyst sites. These sites were identified by the community in the West Fresno Action Plan. Uh, there's the St. Rest property, the Church and Elm site, and the North and Elm site. So the St. Rest property, um, that graphic there, the yellow is the property they currently own, the green is they do not own, but it was included as part of the design concepts. They're in the process of developing a park and community building as we speak, and if we're all quiet enough, we could probably hear some hammers going because it'll be open pretty soon. We wanted to expand upon that vision, so we included a mixed-use building on the corner where there's currently the St. Rest Plaza on Elm, which I'll talk about later. That mixed-use building would include a food distribution center, some commercial, as well as some senior housing. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that we included the airnasium and additional green space that they had in their first concept. And then two more concepts build upon that included expansion of the church campus on the east or the west side of Ivy and additional mixed-use buildings to the east of Elm. One site has additional housing on the portion to the south of their current church and the other has a charter school. The next site is Church and Elm. Church and Elm, uh, primarily is housing. The key component here is residential, or excuse me, not residential, but commercial. That's going to be the, the portion of this project that's going to make it pencil. The economists identified that as a key need, especially with the St. Center Community College District coming. Both of the concepts have a park and community space for the residents that would be, uh, on that development. Last and least is the Elm and North site. Uh, this is the most difficult one. Long-term, there's viability for some community commercial. At the moment, uh, it doesn't look like there is, uh, financial resources or, as developers would say, rationale for penciling this out. So the temporary use is a business incubator concept, so building off of some of the strengths that we've already seen, developing a location where there could be a community garden in partnership with the owner, which is Mid Valley Disposal, and utilizing some of their organic compost, a green space, and then an area where local entrepreneurs, merchants, or food distributors could go and sell under a pergola or something, as well as a place for community to gather and recreate. So in order to make this happen, we need to have implementation actions. So we have a variety of those in the document. I'm just going to identify a couple. First and foremost, cleanup is key. This is a brownfield site. So we have to identify what are the contaminants on sites and how are we going to clean it up? Uh, because they are part of the EPA's, uh, process, they, uh, have the ability to get some potential priority and assistance for other funding mechanisms to ensure the cleanup happens in an appropriate manner. Uh, but we need all partners to be involved in that process. Also, building on existing strengths. So the St. Rest Plaza, uh, I know I've seen several of you out there. It's a awesome, community-driven project that's come of this. It's a temporary use. It's a space that there's been dozens of community events. We also want to build upon that and the additional concepts that the church has and making sure that comes to fruition so that they could be the beacon of the neighborhood. Again, this is a playbook. It's intended to be a resource for a variety of users. Uh, just to go over it, gave you an introduction of how we got to where we are today, what the vision of the corridor is, some of the key sites, and some of the key implementation actions. I'm here and available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. We'll take it to the public. I have a card here, a request to speak from Ivanka Saunders, who's on the D3 Implementation Committee. Ivanka, if you're here, please come forward. There you are. Thanks for being here and you'll give us your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ivanka Saunders. I live at 1411 East Drummond Avenue in District 3. Um, I would like to let you know that I am very much in support of the Elm Avenue Revitalization Strategy. Um, and I would also like to thank Drew and Sophia and their hard work from their whole team that has been based mostly on huge efforts of community input. Um, that yes, this is a playbook for southwest Fresno Elm Avenue area, but it is also a playbook for good communication and community engagement for the rest of Fresno to make sure that the needs of community members are actually heard and based on a priority to be involved. The catalyst project at the St. Rest Plaza is a positive collaboration of so many community members and organizations who want to see southwest Fresno succeed and actually thrive for the residents that are living there today. So I hope that you all approve this strategy. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wish to come forward? Here's the opportunity to comment on this specific item.
Um, yeah, my name's Jaime Loza. A lot of, you know, you can't really go against people building in a neighborhood, but here goes some questions because I've seen building, uh, people building before, you know, homes and stuff like that, you know? And I see that a lot of people are living in the areas that they want to, uh, build in. Now I've learned that the permit department, uh, helps out on the removal of families in homes, uh, because see, new people come in and buy the properties and stuff and the people living there, they kick them out. And then plus all these jobs that are coming up inside that neighborhood, are they going to be hiring the people in the neighborhood? I mean, and the new homes that are coming in, are the people in the neighborhood going to be living there? Or new people, rich people? Because what I'm seeing is construction inside, west side, north side, east side. And what they're doing, I, I learned this in downtown Fresno, what you guys do is you guys kick everybody out and you guys are remodeling the hood. Okay? I see it. So here go, there goes the questions. Who really is going to be living in these new homes? I like this, I, I, I like the stores and everything else. And jobs? Jobs? Who's going to be living in it? Permit department's not doing a job.
Anyone else like to come forward? This is the opportunity. Please give us your name and address.
Good morning. I actually put a card in, but I guess it wasn't, uh, passed on to you. My name is Michaelan Lewis and I reside at 2519 South Lotus Avenue in southwest Fresno. And I'm here to, uh, first of all, congratulate Drew Wilson on an excellent presentation for the stra- the Elm Avenue. Um, I've been on the steering committee for the Southwest Pacific Plan as well as, uh, I was one of the, I was the only member of the TCC plan that voted for another package. I didn't vote against it. I voted for another package. I'm also on the Elm Avenue Revitalization Steering Committee and it seems like my middle name has become Steering Committee Annie or something like that. And I'll probably be on another steering committee if it means we're going to be improving southwest Fresno. I'm coming to you today in favor of the, um, the plan itself. We've worked very hard. I've seen, I grew up in southwest Fresno. I remember when Elm Avenue was a vital area of the city. We could do all kinds of things and, uh, with services and retail. We could even drive through and get our milk and ice cream and cheese at the Milky Way Dairy on Elm Avenue. So we were ahead of the game with drive-throughs. I'd like to, to ask you all that, uh, to come out sometime and see what we've done with the, uh, Elm Av- St. Rest Plaza on Elm Avenue. In fact, this Saturday, we're having our farmer's market. It should be the last of the season. Uh, it's going to be a chili cook-off led by Fresno PD. As a matter of fact, I just had a judge cancel on me, so if anybody wants to be a judge eating chili, please see me after this. This is going to be a great start for revitalizing not only southwest Fresno, but we need that connection to flow into Chinatown, downtown, and into northwest Fresno. It's time that we start looking at what we have as a precious commodity, use it. And as I said to the planning commission, like Will Rogers said, land, they're not making this stuff anymore. So let's go ahead and revitalize what we have. Thank you. Oh, and I also want to tell you Drew Wilson has been not only our godfather, but the godfather. So if he ever approaches you, just go ahead and say yes, okay? Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Steering Committee. And please keep up your work. We really appreciate that. We really do. We need more people to be involved, especially at that level. Anyone else wish to come forward and address the council? You'll have three minutes once we have your name and address.
Good morning, city council members. Vice President, Council President, my name is Kimberly McCoy. I am Project Director for Fresno Building Healthy Communities. Our address is 4991 East McKinley Avenue, Suite 107. And I just wanted to say that this is very exciting for the residents in west Fresno. This, um, plan gives the residents in west Fresno hope that the city is hearing them and that they're, um, starting to develop projects that they would like to see in their neighborhood. I was a voting member on the TCC, which was really, really a good investment for west Fresno. I also participated, wasn't on the steering committee like Michael Lynn. My middle name is not Steering Committee. My middle name is raising awareness. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, I thank you guys for this plan and that you guys are in favor of it. And I also want to take the time out to thank, um, Council Member Miguel Arias for all his efforts that he's doing in west Fresno to bring attention to west Fresno and to bring investment in west Fresno because we, as west Fresno people, residents, we love our, love our part of the city. We invest in our community if we have the businesses there to invest in our community, so we won't have to go outside of our community. All we're asking for is for us to be treated as equal as the residents in north Fresno and have the businesses and amenities that we need to survive. And I am in favor of this plan, and it's an exciting day for the residents in west Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? This is the opportunity for community members to come forward. All right, thank you all. I will close public comment. This is in District 3. Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say, make a motion to approve, and also, yes, we've got a lot of seconds here, as a reflection of the commitment of this council to reinvest in parts of the city that did not receive the justified investment. But I also wanted to thank staff for a moment. In my view, the general plan, the Southwest Pacific Plan, the TCC process, and the Elm Strategy is a premier example of intentional community engagement, and you guys have continued to establish a really high standard for getting residents involved, hearing their voices and their needs, and responding with the economic strategy, zoning strategy that addresses what they want in their neighborhoods. And as you heard today, west Fresno, what they want is what they used to have, which is complete neighborhoods, complete streets with local businesses, where they can shop, live, and work, and good schools. It's, unfortunately, for decades, we allowed that stuff to deteriorate, to go away without reinvesting in it, and I do want to thank my colleague, former Councilman Oliver Baines, for beginning this process, and for staff for carrying it out with such intentional and genuine interest in getting feedback from our residents. As you can see, we don't lack any ability to engage in the process when we're allowed to, and we don't lack any ability, ability or willingness to invest in our neighborhoods when we're allowed to. So, with that, I call for the question.
Okay. We had a motion by Member Arias, seconded by Member Carbasi. Next request to speak is from Councilmember Soria.
All I wanted to say, I wanted to, you know, thank the community for being resilient and for pushing the city of Fresno to get to this point. I know that it's been a long time coming in terms of the investments in southwest Fresno, and you guys have kept the city accountable and this body accountable, so that you all get the investments that that community deserves. And so, I'm proud to have been supportive along the way. I was actually just visiting St. Rest this weekend and seeing the building go up and be able to add my name in a scripture to the building was pretty remarkable, and I think that, again, it shows how the value of community and community being involved. I also want to congratulate the staff and thank the staff for really making sure that the community's voice is what is highlighted and what is really front and center of this project and revitalizing the community. I think that's what's going to be transformative in this area, so congratulations on everyone and just happy to be able to support this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Obviously, there's none, so it passes 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work as community leaders and Steering Committee members, et cetera. You guys are great. Obviously, you're good advocates, so congratulations. A job well done. All right. Next, we're going to go to item 4 under City Council. It's a bill for introduction. Sorry? Why do? Thank you. So, this is a bill for introduction adding the Tony Hunter Organ Donation Protection Act to our charter, our city. This is sponsored by several of us, and I just want to say at the beginning, we recognized Organ Donation Month in the month of April of this year, and we brought awareness to the residents about this and the importance of donating your organs to save lives. So, we stood and we continue to stand as a body up here to support and encourage people to get involved, and we recognize those who know the pain of uncertainty of the very next day. So, today, I'm proud to stand with all my colleagues as we present and vote on the Tony Hunter Organ Protection Act today, and that's co-sponsored by several of us. Member Carbasi, would you like to add some comments, followed by Members Chavez and Soria?
So, I'm really honored. This is my first bill. You know, it's important to recognize kindness, and true kindness is you're willing to give an organ or a bone marrow to someone who needs it so they can save their lives. Now, in this case, it's from one city employee to another, and so it's an intercity departmental transfer, I think. We'll figure out how that paperwork works. But to Mrs. Hunter, I just want you to know, if he ever thinks of leaving you, he can never get away with it now, okay? You let me know. But I want to thank you for what you're about, what you're going to do, and we want to make sure. I can't speak for the administration, but I'm confident that they would agree that this city truly cares about all of its employees. You represent the fifth-largest city in the state of California, all over, not just in City Hall, but different facilities throughout, and every one of you matters, and we want to make sure that if you choose to go through all the hard work of donating an organ or a bone marrow to somebody, you're going to be protected. And I want to thank staff for working with me on this, my fellow council colleagues, as well as the city attorney, and I believe Jeff Cardell has a couple of suggestions, so we can make this bill even better.
Welcome, Director Cardell.
Good morning, Council President and members of the council. Just a few suggestions that you may want to consider to improve this particular bill. One is the employees for whom it would be applicable to. Rather than just full-time, it is suggested you may consider adding to that full-time and permanent part-time employees in Section 1B. Would also be suggested that you give some consideration in 1B, 1 and 2, whether or not you mean workdays or calendar days. And then, the last suggestion that we have for your consideration would be in the section which discusses the absence and it being a break in service or not a break in service, making sure that that is consistent with the days set forth in B, 1 and 2, workdays or calendar days.
Give us one moment, please.
Yes, I understand we, it meant to include workdays, so in both cases, it would specify workdays. Whether or not you wanted to also apply to part-time employees is up to the council.
I move to approve with those changes.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Member, the list here of Member Chavez, followed by Member Soria, and anyone else that wishes to discuss this? You're good? You're good?
Just wanted to add one quick comment and recognize, because individuals across our community have benefited from, you know, not only being a donor, but being a recipient, and just want to recognize former Chief Huerta, who was a donor recipient. We also talked in the previous council meeting, we recognized the former councilwoman Esther Padilla, who also was a champion on this issue, and so I'm honored to be able to join my colleagues on this great, I think, I believe this great policy, where we tell the staff and our employees that we value not only being a recipient, but also those that are able to donate. Thank you.
We'll take it out to the public now. Anyone in the public wish to address this item? You can come forward now, after you give us your name and address. Should have three minutes. Seeing none. I just want to say thank you to Tony for your unselfish and noble donation to a fantastic fellow sitting next to you, Shane. You're a lucky man. And I just want to thank you guys for all that you've done for the city of Fresno and for everyone in this room. We're all on the same page, and we need to keep working together and keep doing things like this to make not only our lives, but our city, a better place for all Fresno. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Member Carbasi.
Do you mind if I chime in really quickly? I also wanted to thank the council for bringing this forward, and Councilmember Carbasi, we appreciate you taking time with staff last week to work out the kinks, so thank you again.
Member Carbasi, did you want to, you're good? All right. With the motion and the second, is there any opposition? 7-0, 100% success. Okay, we have a request that we do a photo opportunity, if that's okay with Tony and Shane, and we'll do it real quick. If you'll come down in front, and our council will join you. Thank you all very much, and honestly, folks, these are the moments that make this job worthwhile. All the effort we make to become elected officials and to participate in something like that is really, really special for all of us, so thank you. We will return to General Admin, and we are going to 3F, and that is actions pertaining to a pre-purchase of Power Transformer in District 3. And this is Public Utilities. We have a motion to approve by Member Arias, seconded by Member Chavez.
No questions. I'm sorry.
Do you need to build a record at all for this, or I guess is what we're saying? Do you need to build a record, public comments, et cetera?
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right. We'll take it to the public. Anyone from the community wish to address this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. We have a motion and a second, and is there any opposition? Passes 7-0. Thank you for being here. Next is item 3G, actions pertaining to transformative climate communities grant. And I'm going to recuse myself. I'll just send the next item. Yeah, Member Brettafield will exclude himself from 3G and 3H. This is by the City Manager's Office.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Before Laura starts, I'd like to point out, this is her last presentation before you all, so before she leaves us, so.
So, motion by Member Chavez, seconded, sorry.
You're confusing me.
Member, my right and my left, so, motion by Member Arias, seconded by Member Esparza. And with that, we'll take it to the City Manager's Office. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Council Laura Merrill, Deputy City Manager. The item before you is the ongoing program implementation of the subrecipient agreements that align with the master agreement that council approved a couple months ago. This one specifically is for Project 1, which is the Chinatown Housing Project, tolling about $10 million. In addition, there is also a memorandum of understanding with our Public Works Departments as we're doing some work to support that project with offsites. Our staff, as well as the Fresno Housing Authority, is here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the community wish to come forward? Please do so at this time and give us your name and address. Thank you. We'll close public portion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 0 with Member Brettafield and Arias. Sorry, Member Chavez absent, so thank you very much.
Council President, I do want to tell Ms. Merrill that she's been a great asset to the TCC process. She is the one that got us started in the process, which was essentially flying the plane as they were building it, a lot of like a clarity from the state as it was a first-time program, but, you know, and a lot of significant community engagement with a lot of competing priorities, needs, and interests, and she got us to land the plane completely in one piece, and now we've been in the process of doing groundbreakings every other day for all these projects. So, they are on time and on budget, primarily because of her ability to keep us all focused and working out all the kinks behind the scenes. So, you will be greatly missed by the city and the council, and best of luck to you in Seattle.
Thank you very much. Item 3H, approve $397,118 home investment. This is by Planning and Development. Good morning.
Good morning. Karina Nunes from the Housing Division. I don't have anything to add to the staff report. Staff recommends approval, and I can recap if you like.
Thank you very much. Motion by Member Soria.
Second.
Seconded by Member Arias. We'll take it to the public. Anyone out here that'd like to talk about this, please come up. We'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public portion. We have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 5-0 with Member Chavez and Brettafield absent. Member Brettafield recused himself. Next is item 3, no, 3I, or L, rather, we've covered that. So, we'll go to 3J. Okay, we have a motion to approve item 3I, seconded by Member Carbasi. Waving me down. Don't forget you over there.
Council, Councilmember Brettafield is on his way back. He had recused himself, but he should be back here for this.
So, we have a motion and a second. Did anyone want a presentation? No? Okay. We'll take it to the public. Anyone in the public wish to address this item? Please come forward. 3I, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, passes 6-0 with Member Chavez absent. Next is the item 3J, Asset and Code Enforcement Report. This is the City Attorney's Office.
Yes. Council, I was going to lead it off here, and then we have several code people involved.
Very good.
They should be coming in. So, first of all, thank you for bearing with us on this. Normally, this would be the time when we do the quarterly asset report, but given the recent change in the assignment of code enforcement, we thought we'd have a broader discussion. Some of the things that we wanted to go through today, first of all, talk about the existing code structure, and then we will go through the normal asset report, and then you'll also get a report from the other facets of code enforcement, the rental housing inspections, community compliance, which is sort of the catch-all for all of code that's not something else, the NRT, and then what I'd like to do is offer up some issues and options for the council to get direction on for our office. I'd like to have your input on the progress so far. It's been about three and a half months. On any direction for any changes that we'd like to see in code enforcement as far as structural changes, and then priorities and direction for enforcement going forward. Of course, we have limited resources. There are different types of issues that we deal with in a community, and of course, some are going to be higher priority than others. It would be, this would be a good time to get your direction for your priorities on those, and feel free as we go to ask any questions or even make motions as we go. A resolution is not necessary. Basically, you're just giving direction to our office to take certain kinds of actions. So, I think, first of all, I think Erica is going to come up and talk about the existing code structure. Erica?
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, City Manager, Mayor's Office, Erica Camarena, Chief Assistant City Attorney overseeing code enforcement. Thank you very much for the opportunity for us to present our code report, but before I do, I really do want to recognize, and something I failed to do earlier, I want to recognize and thank my assistant, Christina Roberson, who has been an amazing asset, not just to me, but to the code unit as a whole. Not only does she get the job done, but she gets it done right, she gets it done quickly and very efficiently, and she's very, very responsive, and I'm sure each of your council assistants can attest to the fact that when they get ahold of Christina, they get a response, and so, thank you, Christina.
Is this a prelude to a pay raise?
That's always on the table, right?
Okay, all right.
One quick second. Brianna, can you catch us up on the presentation? We're on the three divisions now. Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so, just as an overview, as Doug just mentioned, code enforcement has three divisions. We have our community compliance division, which is headed by code manager Tim Byrne. It would be, this would be a good time to get your direction for your priorities on those. And feel free, as we go, to ask any questions or even make motions as we go. A resolution is not necessary. Basically, you're just giving direction to our office to take certain kinds of actions. So, I think, first of all, I think Erica is going to come up and talk about the existing code structure.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, City Manager, Mayor's Office, Erica Camarena, Chief Assistant City Attorney overseeing code enforcement. Thank you very much for the opportunity for us to present our code report. But before I do, I really do want to recognize, and something I failed to do earlier, I want to recognize and thank my assistant, Christina Roberson, who has been an amazing asset, not just to me, but to the code unit as a whole. Not only does she get the job done, but she gets it done right. She gets it done quickly and very efficiently, and she's very, very responsive. And I'm sure each of your Council assistants can attest to the fact that when they get ahold of Christina, they get a response, and so, thank you, Christina.
Is this a prelude to a pay raise?
That's always on the table, right?
Okay, alright.
One quick second. Brianna, can you catch us up on the presentation?
Oh.
We're on the three divisions now. Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so, just as an overview, as Doug just mentioned, code enforcement has three divisions. We have our Community Compliance Division, which is headed by Code Manager Tim Burns, who's right back here. And his division has several, four area teams that represent the four different quadrants of the city, as well as several specialty teams, which includes our Reactive Rental Housing Team, vacant buildings, illegal dumping, tires, demolitions, vacant lots, as well as some cannabis-related enforcement. Not necessarily enforcement on cannabis, but structural issues, housing issues, electrical issues associated with illegal grows. And then we have our Rental Housing Team, which is led by Code Manager Kevin Watkins, who you will be hearing from in just a minute. He, Asset, our Anti-Slam Enforcement Team falls under his division, which is led by Christina Roberson, and she will be coming up shortly to give you an overview on that. But Kevin is responsible for the Rental Housing Inspection Program, and his team members are the ones who actually go out and do the inspections and collect all that baseline information from all the rental housing in Fresno. Primarily, right now, the multi-housing units. And then we have our Neighborhood Revitalization Team, also known as NRT, which is managed by Phil Sky, who you'll be hearing from shortly. And as you will hear, he and his team are currently in 15 different neighborhoods in the City of Fresno, working very hard to make a difference with each of those residents in those neighborhoods. So, with that, we'll go ahead and segue into the Asset Report, and then move on to the Rental Housing, I'm sorry, the Community Compliance and Rental Housing, and then our NRT report.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members. Christina Roberson, Assistant City Attorney, reporting on Asset, or as you've heard, the Anti-Slam Enforcement Team. Since its inception, Asset has led to compliance of approximately 8,800 violations in more than 600 rental units in the city. Currently, there are 30 open cases in more than 400 rental units. Asset is seeing compliance in multiple different ways with property owners, including agreements, compliance agreements with those property owners, the sale of properties to responsible property owners, and receiverships. Today, I am just highlighting three of the cases that are either in progress or recently closed, and each of these has achieved compliance in one of those different ways. Details regarding the rest of the properties are included on the Weekly Asset Status Report, which is attached to the item today and is posted on the website weekly. The first property that we're gonna look at is 4805 East University. It's a three-unit complex in District 4. This is one where we tried for many months to gain compliance with the property owners, and unfortunately, we were unable to do so. They were either unwilling or unable to comply. Many of the violations at the property include, well, there were 337 total violations, which included no utilities, no electrical service, electrical hazards related to lack of electrical service, and a history of transients and squatters for many years. On January 3, 2019, the court appointed a receiver to manage the property. The receiver rehabilitated it, and it closed escrow to a new owner last week. So, you can see some before-and-after exterior photos here, and some interior photos as well.
Christina, when you, this is in my district, I sincerely appreciate your effort on this and the other problem areas I have in D4. And you mentioned 337 violations. I'm looking at the photos, those are significant violations. We're not talking about chips or nicks or things like that. This is stuff that's critical for the health and safety of the residents in my district and the city as well.
Yes, the types of violations that we're seeing in most asset properties, and especially in this one, are definitely significant health and safety. 337 violations may seem like a lot, but spread across three units that have been, had a very high lack of maintenance for many years, you know, that's what we're seeing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. The next property I'm highlighting is 4815 East Fountain Way. This is 57 units, also happens to be in District 4. After Asset issued a notice and order for a high number of violations in this one, 1,931 violations, the property owners actually sold the property to a new property owner, who is currently in the process of rehabilitating the property. So, this one, again, is more of an in-progress, but you can see a huge improvement. Even just that pool makes a big difference, because that's very hazardous for the residents. The exterior has definitely seen some improvement, and again, it's definitely under construction and in progress. The last property I highlight today is 4608 to 4612 East Inyo. This property is one where the property owner actually stepped up and has brought the property into compliance. This is eight units in District 7. Asset issued a notice and order for 854 violations, and the property owner entered into a compliance agreement and followed through. The property passed its final compliance inspection in June of 2019. So, you can see some before-and-after of the exterior. Again, a very hazardous electrical, or water heater, which is something that we see a lot of, and some of the interior before-and-after photos as well. And I'm open for questions, and if no one has any questions for me, I will be turning it over to Kevin Watkins, the Rental Housing Manager.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members. My name is Kevin Watkins. I'm the manager of the Rental Housing.
Excuse me really quick, before you start, Christina, I had one question for you. On Asset, in your estimation, how many properties can we process under Asset at any given time?
Well, currently, we have 30 open cases, and again, they're at all varying stages. So, some have just been inspected this week, and some are nearing completion.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Again, Kevin Watkins, manager of the Rental Housing Division, or Rental Housing Unit. I have Asset and the Proactive Rental Housing Program. As most of you know, the Proactive Rental Housing Unit was, our program was passed in February of 2017 for the purpose of identifying substandard housing and improving, ensuring that the rental housing units meet the minimum health and safety standards. In April of 2018, they began efforts to solicit registration for the registry of rental properties, and beginning that, they mailed out 85,000 informational brochures to owners of rental properties. Currently, we've got 85, over 85,000 units registered at 30,000 properties, and to date, we have completed 6,478 baseline inspections, which have, that's 4,391 at two, over 2,000 properties. At the time of baseline inspections, about 67% require some sort of correction. And at the end of the 30-day timeframe that people are given to come into compliance, about 67% are now coming into compliance. So, we're seeing some good success there. Some examples of those?
Just to confirm what you just said.
Yes.
Over half the properties that we inspect require improvements. Is that?
67% approximately.
Thank you.
Yes, so a high percentage requires some sort of correction, that may be a smoke detector, a broken window, something substantial. And then after 30 days, about 67% of those are coming into compliance. These are some examples of some of the types of correction issues that the Proactive Rental Housing Team finds. Here, we've got at 2155 East Peralta Way, mold, severe mold situation that got corrected in a bathroom. At 2122 East Peralta, somebody had done some sewer repairs.
Quick question, on your mold in the restrooms, which is very common. Did they just simply paint over, replace sheet rock, or did they actually put a fan to avoid this two months from now?
From this particular case, I do not have, I don't have that information.
What's your guys' standard response? Do you require them to permanently fix it, or just to paint over the mold?
Well, we require them to fix whatever the problem was. So, if this was simply surface mold, it could be bleached and cleaned and painted and taken care of. If this was due to a water leak, a ceiling leak, something like that, we'd require them to fix it. So, it's all dependent on exactly what the problem was.
Are you requiring them to put vents and fans to avoid mold?
We're not requiring them, we just require them to fix the situation, whatever the cause of the situation is. We don't give them a specific solution.
Okay.
Here at 2122 East Peralta Way, we have some exterior walls that they had done some plumbing repairs, and they had just left it open. Here, we had them repair that. We, one of the most common issues on interiors is smoke detectors. They're either missing completely, missing batteries, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. So, this one was at 205 North Effie. We also have roach infestation, insect infestation issues, and here, this particular one includes a copy of the invoice for the pest control treatment. We come across flooring issues and transition strips between flooring here at 653 Mayor. That one was pretty severe. And as well as broken windows. We oftentimes have exterior junk and rubbish and debris on exteriors of properties and complexes, so we ensure that those get cleaned up as well. And this is my last slide at 219 North Effie for exterior paint and weathered surfaces. And if, with that, if you have any additional questions, I can go ahead, or I can just pass it off to...
We have a question by Member Carbasi.
Yes, sir. Good question. How do we balance the responsibility of a property owner, if they're, for example, big projects that have to be maintained, versus the tenant who maybe certain behaviors may result in more mold?
Well, we can usually tell. If there are holes punched in a wall, if it is, if a roach infestation is caused by roaches, or by food, pet food that's being left, if they're not being clean and sanitary, then we can attribute that to the tenant. And the tenants have, they have rights or responsibilities as well. And so, we'll address those as, as we determine them.
Thank you, Member Carbasi.
I do have some questions. So, one of the frequent complaints I get around the inspection program is when you guys do spot inspections of big apartment complex units. So, I know the current program has you doing, how many in 100-unit complex, how many units would you actually inspect?
In a 100-unit complex, we're doing, I believe, it's 10%. In the Rental Housing Improvement Act, in the guide, we have a scale that says for 51 units and over, we're doing 10% of all the units.
So, one of the complaints I get from tenants is that the property owners only fix the units that were inspected and ignore the rest of the units that are in similar condition. How do you overcome that workaround or loophole that property owners are not just dealing with the 10 units and ignoring the other 90?
Well, the tenants always have the opportunity to call in. They still have remedies through traditional code enforcement. So, we do have a Reactive Rental Housing Team that Mr. Burns will be speaking to under the Community Compliance, that if they have issues inside their units, they can always call that in. But the program here was designed, by design, they came up with the table and the percentages...
Do you guys inform the, all the tenants that you're on-site inspecting 10% of the units, and that they all have the ability to submit complaints?
Yes, yes, we do.
Based on the conditions?
We post, two weeks before, actually, let me go all the way back, three weeks before the inspection date, we notify the owner. We send the owner a one-week lead time, letting them know that there's gonna be an inspection scheduled at the property, and the date and time and all of that. Two weeks before the inspection, we do site postings. We notify the tenants, we post in common areas in the, if they have a laundry room or something like that, around the common mailboxes, so we'll post there as well. So, all the tenants in the area are aware that we're gonna be there.
So, the property owners technically have three weeks of advance notice to get their act together before the team shows up, right?
Yes, that was a modification we actually made to the program. As the program has grown, we've learned some things. And so, one of the things we, some of the feedback we were getting from owners was that they were only getting the same two-week notice that properties, that the tenants were getting. And so, they're, and oftentimes, they were hearing from their tenants that the city was gonna be at the property on this date. So, listening to some of that feedback and meeting with some of the owners, we said, you know what, maybe it's fair to give them an additional week of lead time, so we made that modification.
And even though you're giving the property owner three weeks' lead time, you're still finding violations when you show up on-site for the inspection, correct?
Yes, we are.
And you're still finding health and safety violations?
Yes, I think the, from the photos, it's pretty evident that the stuff that we're finding isn't just, you know, scratches and nicks, it's substantial.
Okay, I just want to be clear for the public that property owners have significant notice, they, and when we show up, we're still finding significant health and safety failures.
Yes, we are.
So, if they're looking for pity from this body, or from the city, they're probably not gonna find it, because they know clearly what are the rules and what standard they should be maintaining their properties, and they were given sufficient notice. And, okay, thank you with that.
Yes, sir.
Council, I wanted to add, follow-up. The proactive inspection gets us in the door. If we get in there and inspect 10%, and it looks really bad, we can call in Asset. They will inspect the entire complex and even take it all the way to receivership if we have to.
My preference would be, once you inspect the 10%, and you find significant health and safety violations, that the automatic should be that you inspect all the units, because it's very rare that you're gonna find significant health and safety violations on four units, and the rest of them are gonna be in perfect condition.
So, actually, we did do that. We have created a referral process to either Asset or to the Reactive Rental Housing Team. What our first thing, the very first trigger that we have, let's say our inspectors go out, and they're saying, they're over their head, they're saying, this place is pretty bad, there are a lot of violations. The very first thing we do is we have Randy Calvert from the Asset Unit, as a supervisor there, go out and begin an evaluation for himself, and make a determination, is this going to become an Asset case, where we're gonna look inside every single unit and the entire grounds, or are these a bunch of one-offs? And then it gets referred over to the Reactive Rental Housing Team. So, we have created a referral process. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Carbasi.
I think the City Attorney can answer. How are we informing tenants and the property owners? Is it electronic, or is it just through mail?
Kevin, you wanna tell us?
I'm sorry, sir?
How, no problem. How are we informing tenants and property owners? Is it electronic, or is it just through mail?
No, so, we do first-class mailing, and we do site posting. So, the owners are getting their, their copy of the letter, the inspection letter, notice of intent to inspect. They're getting that three weeks ahead of the inspection date, and then, two weeks ahead of the inspection date, we are doing site postings.
Why, that's great, but, I mean, I'm sure we have their information in the registry. Why aren't we doing electronic notification?
Electronic notification...
Email as well, on top of that.
Well, we actually do have technology involved in this. We, the owners have the, and property managers have the capability to upload corrections. Now, that's not addressing your exact question. Your exact question is, why aren't we notifying them electronically?
In addition.
Which is something we can do.
Okay.
But we are using technology to allow them to upload their photos and proof of correction items to, electronically to the account, and then we have our senior inspectors who review those. So, we are using technology to our best advantage.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I am in agreement with Councilmember Carbasi. The initial notice, I know, goes through snail mail. I think it needs to go electronic, so that they have as much notice as possible and give them an opportunity to fix things immediately.
Yes, absolutely. That's something that we can incorporate.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members. My name is Tim Burns, and I manage the Community Compliance Division. And for simplicity, that is actually the traditional code enforcement services that the City requires. And so, I oversee a number of different teams. I currently have 43 staff members, of which 30 of those are actually inspectors. And our basic code enforcement model has four area teams. There's a map in your packet and on the board that would show how the city has been divided into four districts that somewhat resemble the five police districts. In each of the districts, we have a different number of code inspectors that are assigned primarily to simply deal with those district areas. So, in the Northeast District, we have four inspectors. In the Southeast District, we have three. In the Northwest District, we have three. And in the Southwest District, we have three. And they deal primarily with code complaints that come into those specific regions of the city. They do have the ability, however, to move about the city. We've come to an understanding that if one area is overloaded and the other is underwhelmed, then we will address resources to provide the best service level possible. So, one of, one of my units that I have is my Reactive Housing Unit. And if you have specific questions, I have the Reactive Housing Unit Supervisor, Deseret Garcia, in the audience, and he can speak to that. The unit is a unit that was recently launched, it was just coming up on its one-year anniversary. It was the third element of the rental housing units to be activated, and it was decided to put it in the Code Enforcement or the Community Compliance Division strategically, so that nothing was gonna fall through the cracks. So, this unit enforces all substandard housing complaints throughout the city that do not rise to an asset level, and they're not a housing inspection level. So, they have quite a few, as you can see by the number. Currently, they've looked at 1,200... Currently, they've looked at 1,259 cases. And one of the things that I think is really important to reflect upon is that we strive to gain voluntary compliance, and of course, when voluntary compliance is not achievable, then we go to enforce compliance. And speaking with the supervisor this morning, of the 1,259 cases so far, he's indicated that they have issued only eight administrative citations. So, that would suggest that these cases are making progress, and really, that's what our goal is. The least resistance for the greatest good for the greatest number of people, and so that we can move on. And so, they've done an amazing job. This unit is, it has a direct supervisor, it has one senior inspector, and then, it has five community, CRSs, Community Revitalization Specialists, and they handle all the cases citywide. Now, what that doesn't speak to is substandard housing that may be owner-occupied. And so, that type of substandard housing is given to seniors on the area teams. And so, the seniors, who are most experienced code enforcement inspectors, will actually handle those, and that was all done strategically to ensure that we provide a good level of service to our community.
Would that be like hoarders?
Yes, it could be, it could be somebody, yes, sir.
I mean, in my district, they have a little bit of that here and there, and it's, it's pretty tough to manage.
It absolutely is because it concerns several elements, potentially some mental health issues. It really does take a team of different subject matter experts to address those and a long time. Those situations don't happen overnight, and they are certainly not resolved overnight. We try and deal with those as we become aware. Sometimes, our police department or our fire department will also make us aware on those situations, Councilmember.
I appreciate that.
So, so, some of the before-and-after pictures for our reactive housing unit are before you now, and I won't spend a lot of time because I think the pictures speak volumes for what the before-and-after, the work that goes into these things to get back to safe and habitable housing. And so, I'll just roll through these quickly. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Again, we're focusing on serious violations, we're not worrying about the minor things. These pictures, I think, will clearly reflect those type of circumstances to you. So, I want to talk briefly about our demolition team. It's a team of one, primarily that consists of Jesse Morrison. You'll be able to speak to Mr. Morrison in the near future. He's been, going to be recognized as our employee of the quarter. And so, he's a phenomenal individual, he's been with the city for a long time, and he's very accomplished. He actually deals with a number of properties every year, and I think, again, to speak to his effectiveness, although, you know, we may deal with 25 to 30 properties, as a city, we're only required to take down a third to half of those, and that speaks to his ability to motivate people to do the right thing for the right reason. And so, again, the numbers speak for themselves. He's an amazing individual who's done an exceptional job for the city for a number of years. Want to talk a bit about our specialty teams. Again, these are some before-and-after pictures for demolition, and recognize that this is one individual that is solely dedicated throughout the city of Fresno for the most difficult cases. He works hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm with our city attorneys as well, and together, we have a great outcomes, and we've, we've not taken a misstep that I'm aware of in my tenure with the city, and I've been told not prior to that as well. And there's a lot of risk when you're going to do work of this nature.
Can you just give us, walk us through, like, in that property, why did you guys determine that demolition was the best approach versus a rehab or a sale?
I don't, I, Councilmember, I don't have the specifics. I will get back to you in regards to that, sir, because I want to give you accurate information.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Demolitions typically follow, for the most part, where there's been a significant fire at a location?
Correct, yes, that's correct. Or significant other substandard housing conditions where a property is deemed to be more than half, half of the property is unfixable and has to be repaired, recognizing if you want to throw enough money at anything, you can repair it. But often, these are properties that there's been a death, and the property's been abandoned. Oftentimes, we can't find the people, and that's, again, where the city attorney's office has been exceptionally helpful for a number of years in helping us to get to the finish line on these, and these do take a long time to get to that end result. So, we also have tasks with dealing with vacant buildings, and you all have some of those in your districts, we know this. And so, when I came onboard two years ago, we were, we were around the 1,200 range of vacant buildings that were on our registry, and at one point, we had a high before I came, as I've been told, of about 1,500. Well, I'm pleased to tell you now, we're down in the 200 to 300 range, and that number fluctuates on a day-by-day basis. We get a lot of complaints and information through our police department and our fire department, and we work hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm with them to help to address these circumstances. We have two of our Community Revitalization Technicians, literally, that they drive around every day, and they look at these properties on a, on a regular schedule to ensure that they remain secured and to ensure that they're not growing junk, trash, debris, or weeds. And so, these two individuals have done an exceptional job, and we're pleased to say that that number continues to come down, and, and so, we're hopeful that one day, we'll be able to roll these back into the area team assignments and reassign those individuals. So, again, these are before-and-after pictures of vacant properties, and once they've been purchased and ultimately have been rehabilitated, to use them for their dedicated best allowed use. And so, again, it speaks to the city's commitment to our city and our communities. Illegal dumping, this is a highly discussed topic recently, and, and again, you've, this morning, recognized Mr. John Lotfroel for his work, and John is an exceptional individual. He's a, he's a force to be reckoned with, he's an army of one. But through the technology that the city has been allowed to provide to him, and through his passion and commitment, you can see he issued 121 citations. He works very closely with our waste haulers, and in addition to those folks, with the police department, who has dedicated resources as well. And so, there's a lot of work to be done, it's never going to be finished, but we have the right guy doing the right job at the right time. And so, that's an important thing. We also have a dedicated team of two who deal with weed abatement. And they deal with weed abatement, but they also deal with vacant lot parcels on a yearly basis. And so, they spend their entire year, that's all they do, all day, every day, is to go out and look at the condition of these properties, issue citations, we do a significant number of weed abatements, and so, junk, trash, and debris cleanups as well, through the council's gift of resources for our abatement and demolition funds. We've had, we had the resources to do our work, and I thank you for that personally.
Thank you. City Attorney, can you let us know, when was the last time we adjusted the weed abatement fines and the illegal dumping fines? I don't know if those have to be revisited based on, you know, they might be too low to encourage people to actually follow the rules.
We can check whether those are in the municipal code or in the master fee schedule. We do plan to return to you soon with some changes in the master fee schedule anyway, and we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
And also, I wanted to point out, on the weed case, Councilmember Soria referred a case to us a few months ago where there have been weeds there for a number of months, and this will tell you about the resourcefulness of this group. It was a vacant building, the owner had been sent notice, but we weren't getting any response. Well, they figured out that the owner was a pharmacist in Visalia, tracked him down, called the pharmacy, spoke to him, and said, "You need to get your weeds cut." He said he wasn't aware of it because he wasn't getting the mail. The next day, the weeds were gone. The owner went out and took care of it. That's what they're able to do.
Thank you. Want to talk to you a minute about an amazing team that we've had, and we've had it for a number of years, a decade or beyond, and that's our tire team. And our tire team deals with waste tires. They actually do an amnesty event, and we actually have an amnesty event coming up on October 26, and it's at the Teague Elementary School, and it'll be from 8 till noon. Now, what happens there is they go out, they take out a couple of large truck trailers, and they allow members of our community, citywide, to come in and surrender waste tires at no expense. I've had the opportunity to go out and participate in the event multiple times. It's a really feel-good event where people are thankful, they're grateful, and they're very friendly, and our tire team will collect somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 waste tires on that one day in a four-to-five-hour period, and those are tires that would otherwise be discarded in other places. In addition to this team of two labors that we have, we also do regular tire inspections for tire sellers and resellers and for tire waste haulers. And so, this is a program that has been funded for a number of years through the Cal Recycle Program, and because of that, it allows for Fresno to be a cleaner, better place, and really, it speaks to the resilience of the, of the people assigned to it. They're loyal, dedicated, they're hard-working people, and it also speaks to the council's position over a number of years to support us going for that grant, and so, that's a very important factor. One of the things that has recently come up, and we've, we've really got a flavor for it better now, is the illegal cannabis and honey oil labs. We actually have one of our inspectors that's a dedicated staff member, and, and his primary responsibility is police department liaison, and, and in the last year, he's looked at about 1,100 complaints regarding cannabis-related activities. And I want to share with you that we don't look at it specifically for cannabis. What we do is we look at it for the building code violations and the planning and land use violations, and so, he's typically the last in, and he, he's kind of dangerous because he carries a big, long pencil, and by the time he's done writing things up, there are significant works that need to be done. And so, we wanted to bring this to your attention. We know that these are topics that are a priority to you as a council currently. Mobile vending, this is something that's been on the radar for a number of years as well. I want to share with you that we put out a mobile vending enforcement team on two nights, typically a Saturday or Friday night, twice a month, and so, they go out and they do a variety of enforcement. As recently as this last Saturday, the team was out. The team is comprised of anywhere from six to eight people. They work in two-man trucks or cars. Each car is typically bilingual, so we don't have communication breakdowns. We recognize that a big part of our role is to educate the community. This last weekend, on Saturday night, they made 48 contacts, and of the 48 contacts, they actually issued four fix-it tickets and gave a lot of warnings, a lot of education. What we know, on the following Monday after this team is out, our workload is going to spike in our office because people are coming in to get licensed to do the right thing. And so, we're pretty pleased with the results of this over the past year. We've had, we've seen a significant increase in the number of licensed mobile vendors in the city of Fresno as a direct result of this enforcement team's actions. We also, once a month, put out on a Saturday, one of our senior inspectors to handle anything that would typically happen after hours or on weekends when people tend to know that we're not routinely working. And so, we're trying to provide coverage when coverage wouldn't necessarily be available. We've had great results in that regard as well.
You know, that's a very inspiring thought and comment you just made. So, I think people think they were just around doing these things to harass them and to generate fines and things like that. It's actually opposite of what we want to do, which you just illustrated, which is, we want you to be educated, we want you to have an opportunity to comply and to do the right thing. If you can't comply and conform to those common-sense things, then there's penalties. So, I think the approach is fantastic, and I'm glad to hear that you're getting the response that you are. But with that, we might take a lunch break. It's 12:04. I think we might want to come back. We have closed session yet, and we can return at 1:30, appropriate? 1:30?
Thank you, Councilmember Burns.
Thank you.
Are we going right into closed session at 1:30 or back out here?
I would suggest we come back and finish this item first.
I agree.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you all very much for your patience in being here. All right, folks. We, it's, we're a little bit late, 1:36. Brevity and punctuality are my forte, allegedly. So, anyway, we have a quorum, and we'd like to continue with this presentation. Thank you all very much.
Well, good afternoon, Council President and Council. Good to be with you this afternoon. My name is Phil Sky, Neighborhood Revitalization Manager for the city. And I wanted to just share a little bit about some of the work that my division has been doing under my leadership for the last three and a half years, but more than that, just, you know, since its inception in 2014. The neighborhood utilization team seeks to improve the quality of life for every resident by focusing the city's resources and those of partner agencies in our most deteriorated neighborhoods. We use what the Urban Institute refers to as strategic code enforcement, which is a national best practice as it relates to the way in which we do code enforcement. The NRT is now in 15 neighborhoods citywide. Recently, earlier this year, the Restor Fresno Leadership Table identified an additional five neighborhoods, which means that we'll start many of those in 2020, which signals that we will be halfway to our goal of 40 neighborhoods. Applying this proactive, methodical approach to code enforcement and community revitalization more generally, we have seen a number of wonderful activities come out of this work, as well as just general results, and I'll share those briefly now. We have had, just this past fiscal year, we have hosted, my community coordinators especially, who are fantastic, have hosted over 300 community meetings just this last fiscal year. And I've appreciated for quite some time this council's emphasis on community engagement, and I think that my team does a really good job of that. We have over 150 residents in our 15 neighborhoods, meeting every single week, talking about their priorities as a neighborhood. This past fiscal year, my coordinators, again primarily, but often as a result of a referral by my code inspectors, they completed 60 community projects in our neighborhoods, which included exterior house paints, included plumbing repairs, including landscaping, including fence repairs and rebuilds. And all of those 60 projects came from the cultivation of community resources. They were private donations, every one of them. We have also, and so, we've seen over tens, over tens of thousands of dollars raised in community resources just this last fiscal year. Those 60 projects represent tens of thousands of dollars in community resources. And we've also aligned and matched up many of our HUD dollars with our homeowners that have the greatest need in the neighborhoods where we work, and that represents hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional investment in the neighborhoods that we have engaged. Of course, you know that the reason that we are in the neighborhoods we are in and the reason in which they were selected is that they are historically have been the most deteriorated neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that we have neglected the longest. And so, it is a heavy lift, but we are proud of the work that we've done. We've seen blight decrease 95 percent, crime decrease 8 percent in our neighborhoods across the board, fires are down 34 percent, graffiti is down 11 percent, resident efficacy is up 8 percent. When we ask residents, how do you feel about your neighborhood? And we say, do you feel like your neighborhood is safer? 13 percent say of those that we have surveyed say it's safer, and 28 percent say that it is cleaner. Additionally, because we work so closely with Fresno Unified as part of the Restor Fresno Initiative, we have also, and we're really excited about these results, we've also seen that our schools are outperforming the achievement of comparable schools to those in which we are focusing. And so, we are doing work in a neighborhood, surrounding a school, and those schools are outperforming schools where we're not doing that same work, and they have been identified by Fresno Unified's senior leadership as schools that are comparable to the ones where we are working. 17 percent increase in language arts scores, 18 percent increase in math scores. Fresno Unified should celebrate, and they are celebrating, that they have seen across the board 10 percent gains in English, in language arts, and 11 percent in math. We are 17 and 18 respectively. And lastly, but not least, you would expect that after all of this investment, that property values are reflecting that investment, and they are also trending upward. So, I wanted to share, if I can, briefly, a couple of projects that we've done, and we've done a number of workshops with you all over the last year. And so, my presentation, in terms of just the photographic portion of it, is going to be briefer than my colleagues before me. And so, here's a representation of the 15 neighborhoods. You see, we are current in all of them, in one of the four phases of our work. Here is just an example. When we do this deep work and we go parcel by parcel, we run across, time and time again, properties that no one has reported, cases that no one has brought to our reactive team's attention, for a number of reasons, a number of reasons. And so, this particular property was a vacant property that no one had reported, but there were significant issues in both the interior and the rear yard. And of course, you can see, as a result of my code enforcement officer's work, they got it fully rehabbed and on the market, and we were very pleased to see that happen on Strathair in the Columbia neighborhood. 737 North Third Street, that is a Hidalgo property. This is an owner-occupied property, is a property that someone was living in, and the conditions were substandard, to say the least. We were able to partner them with HUD resources that are given to this agency and our housing division that helps to facilitate, and they do a wonderful job. And we were able to help this homeowner improve the quality of his home. And lastly, this property, 274 North Glen, was a property that has been a problem for our city and for this neighborhood for decades. When my team got involved in it, they were able to sort of shake it loose and address the probate issues, which were complex. We had next-of-kin who were living inside in unhealthy and unsafe conditions, not to mention, you can just see the exterior deterioration. And then, we had folks camping in the backyard. And so, we got involved. It was a complex process, but ultimately, we were able to get that property in the hands of someone who has done a wonderful job renovating that property. And so, these are just a few examples. We've, of course, done a number of cases, referred a number of cases and worked with our attorneys to petition the court for receiverships. And there just isn't anything that we won't do, because when we get into a neighborhood, we're asking the residents, what are your top priorities? And we go after those priorities, and we find the resources, if we don't have them, to bring to the table in order that our residents can pursue their vision for their community in a sustained manner. So, that is my presentation this afternoon, Council. Thank you for listening so intently, and I would receive any questions you might have.
Thank you, Phil. Christina, could you help with the PowerPoint now? Council, from here on out, what we'd like to do is get both your input and direction, of course, answer questions on a few items, and in addition, what I've laid out, of course, anything that you would like to cover. We'd like to discuss our progress so far, the structure of code enforcement, and then your priorities and direction. So, feel free to step in if you want to make a motion, give direction as we go, that's perfectly fine. First of all, on the direction on progress, next slide. These are the things that we've attempted to focus on early on. One is communication. I think, especially Christina, standing right here, you probably hear from five times a day. She is incredible with her communication, as well as Erica and the rest of the group. One of the things that we started with the first day is that we will do the best we can with communication. If anything, you might be hearing too much from us. The second is access to information. We've arranged so that the council districts can have direct access to Acela, so you can check on the progress of cases, as well as access to our people to get information. responsiveness. When we hear about something, I mean, it's really one of those cases, if you say jump, we're in the air before you finish the sentence. We had something come up a couple of weeks ago, actually during a council day, where somebody discovered a dead horse on the side of a right-of-way, and before we could tell people that wasn't our job to do it, they had the dead horse picked up and gone. And so, I mean, while we were talking about it up here, they were out doing it. I think they're incredibly responsive, but nonetheless, we'd appreciate your input on that. The next one, tailoring services to district priorities. To some extent, we've already started this, and that's part of what I want to do today is have a more formal discussion on that. Obviously, every council district is different, has different needs, and you may have different priorities. And so, to a great extent, we can tailor what we do based upon the needs of your council district. Next, results. Of course, all of this is important only if we're getting results. We have sent out, many times, we will send out even a warning letter or a courtesy notice, and that alone gets compliance. I think ideally, the community sees what we're doing, and it provides deterrence from property owners allowing their property to be deteriorated. If not for that, then at least the next best thing is we tell them you have a problem, and they fix it before we have to do anything else. But nonetheless, I believe we're getting results. But at this point, if you have any feedback on any of those items, we would welcome that. Then next, I wanted to talk about structure. Of course, the existing structure is we have community compliance, which includes the area teams as well as the specialty teams, rental inspections and asset, and then NRT, which you just heard about. Now, the next is to propose some options. There are many ways we can go with this. Technically, as a department, we would have the ability to make some of these decisions, but of course, I think we would best be served by doing that with council input. If the council as a whole would like to delegate to the council code enforcement committee, the ability to give direction to our office, it might not be a bad idea to formalize the committee and do that. If you do that, of course, it's going to be subject to Brown Act, but then you would have, you could act much more quickly and be more responsive as a body if you were to formalize the committee.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
So, you have a council liaison. Would that help in the potential Brown Act violations?
Well, the council liaison, I don't think would make a difference as far as violations. Early on, we thought it would be a good idea to have somebody from code enforcement situated in the council offices to, you could be your direct contact, but I think we're doing okay without that. We decided not to do it at the time because of funding and not having a funded vacancy for that, but I'm not so sure. But if you all desire that, we can figure out how to get a liaison actually situated in the council offices, if you would like that.
Well, I was thinking that maybe as needed, two or three days a week in the offices so we can pop in and discuss these items and so forth.
Have somebody downstairs?
We're in our area right here.
Right.
In our council offices. So, two or three, excuse me, two or three days a week so we can directly communicate or get updates, find out where we are and what we're doing. And then, the balance of the time could be at your disposal, or whatever you think would be best.
We can, we can look at that, if there's a place for them to go, so that you can just walk down the hall and have a conversation, we can make that work for you, if that's what you want.
I'm just concerned with, when you mentioned the famous Brown Act, with formalizing council code committee.
Well, yes. If you formalize the committee, it would then be subject to Brown Act, which means we have to notice meetings and that kind of thing. But the flip side of that is, if the council wants to, it can delegate authority to that committee then to give direction to our office to do things in a particular way. That's totally up to you.
As an ad hoc committee, rather than?
As a formal committee rather than an ad hoc committee.
Informal committee.
It would be a formal committee then.
Formal.
If you want to do that. That's just an option.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, two of the larger items to talk about. Of course, if you want to move to a council district team format, whereas instead of the four area teams, you would like to have dedicated council district teams for each council district, where you would get to know those people, they would work based upon the priorities that you had set for your council district. We can look at that as an option, and then I think we figure out, how do we do that? I think there are basically two options. Either, one, we add resources to do that, or two, we restructure and move some people around to get that done. So, we're open to some direction on how to do that. We might want to have a more in-depth discussion here about NRT and what you would like to do with that. I think there are, there are two sides of NRT. One, they do a fantastic job focusing resources. The flip side is, would you prefer those resources to be more broadly distributed? So, that's really the policy decision for you all to make.
You know, in my experience, the second option of each council district having a team, when we had that at Eldorado Park, it was fantastic. And then, we started mixing and matching team members and totally lost momentum. So, I can tell my council colleagues with certainty and authority that the, each district team set for that area worked very well, extremely well. And then, when you mix it into the pot and you start sending people in different areas, in Eldorado Park, we're still recovering from that. It's been years. So, I really, really like the idea of combining and then delegating it to each district. So, then I know who it is, we got the problem areas, we can address it, we will have a relationship that's most beneficial to, to the district.
Well, Council, at this point, I think we would welcome, if you want to make any motion to give, make any motions to give our office direction on these things, I think that would be a good way to handle it.
All right, I will do some questions first, but I think the, you know where I'm coming from on that. I have, and I will make a motion at the appropriate time. And I interrupted you, so please continue.
And then, the last item we had listed on this page was, during the budget process, the code enforcement budget was reduced by $250,000. I think there was some discussion about possibly restoring that at some point, maybe when the carryover is determined as to what, from what it was last year. We could certainly benefit from the use of those funds to fill positions that are unfunded right now. I think we haven't officially stated, I think, as the city what we are on the carryover, but I think it would be safe to say that it exceeds that amount. Of course, there are budget priorities for other items, too. But if the, some or all of the $250,000 was cut, would be restored, of course, that would be helpful in providing the services that you would like to see.
Just to follow up on that, City Manager, when will we get our numbers? I've got numbers informally. When will we officially be able to see what the carryover is, if it's truly 5.5 million or not?
Oh, okay. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that that number was out there. Okay. Yes, actually, I've been meeting with both the budget manager and the finance director and have seen a couple of things that need to be corrected within the system that needed some further research. We've gotten that done. And so, I would suspect that within the next, I would say, three to four weeks, we would have some definitive answers for you as far as the actual amount of the carryover. It just took some additional time because there were some, some entries that needed to be reversed and needed to be reclassified, both for the budget carryover and for the preparation of the CAFER. And so, that work needed to be completed until we were satisfied that the number that we were looking at was actually correct, because up until this point, it wasn't.
And our ETA on that is?
As I stated, three to four weeks. I can't get this button.
That's right. We got you loud and clear. I think we, as a council, one or two weeks would be more friendly to us, but we can discuss that further and.
I mean, if council wants to put the 250 on the list, there were other things on the list for prioritization for the carryover from the budget discussion. Council prioritized certain items that they wanted to have priority funding for any excess carryover, and so, we've kept those on a list, and those will be funded. And then, if there is anything over and above that, then the 250 can be added to that, and that can be dealt with.
Well, I think we need to see the list.
By council.
Because times have changed and. Well, I think we need to see the list because times have changed, and scenarios have changed, and finances have changed, so there might be a priority list, but I think what we're interested in is the gross number, and then we would compare and contrast that to, that June list as compared to the October list. I hope we get it sooner in this month. So adding it or not doesn't preclude it from the gross numbers. So I think what my colleagues have indicated is they want a gross number, and they will divide it as per the council's priorities and authorization.
Council president, if I just may request that as staff gets the total number of carryover clear, that staff not bring additional items or propose additional expenditures until we first have a conversation about what is the existing list that we adopted in the budget. I don't want to set anybody's false expectations, and surely don't want to suggest to Council Member Caporal that he gets two community centers before we figure out the first one.
Reading my mind.
Understood.
All right, I'm sorry if you have anything else to add, Doug?
That is what I had listed as options for you all to make motions on if you choose to. The remaining, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and continue with the remaining page if you would rather wait on that. Then the final page, as far as priorities and direction, these are some issues that I can say, this is what we intend to do unless the council gives us direction otherwise. As far as enforcement generally, we are, especially when it comes to housing, we're going to focus on significant health and safety issues. I believe if we focus on health and safety and not get bogged down with too many other issues, that will allow us to touch more properties and get more done. Also, of course, that's primarily the interior of houses and apartments. Of course, we always need to address nuisance and blight, nuisances to the neighbors or blight that affects the surrounding community, of course, we're going to focus on those things. When it comes to lower priorities, some of the things we've already talked about, I think generally we'll start with courtesy notices, and then, of course, if it gets more serious, we can take it from there. We want to be mindful of avoiding gentrification. I think many areas of town, I think, would aspire to gentrification. We're a long way from that, but nonetheless, I think we don't want to, in a way, do too much that causes rental values to go up too much, that starts displacing people and that kind of thing. In other words, I think this is something that we're just mindful of, and I think we'd want to track it with objective information to the extent we can. We've talked about some programs that are in the works now, for example, motel inspections and some other types of things that could result in people being displaced. I think before we get there, it would be really good to have a displacement plan ready to go. I think that's going to be a combination of working with other members of the community, whether it's apartment owners, housing authority, whatever it may be, to have a plan in place, and it may require funding, too, if it means that we have to pay to hold places for when people may become displaced. But in any event, I think that's something I think we'll be working with the administration on, as well as possibly some other agencies. We had a good talk with Patience Milrod about this the other day, and I think she's all in and helping us with that. And then, of course, what we mentioned, tailoring enforcement to district priorities, we intend to do that. And then, on the last page, some specific topics for possibly further direction, generally, our policy is we're going to enforce the law unless you want to change the law. Some things that have come up recently include things like razor wire, what are some other things that, oh, chickens. People have complained both ways on chickens, either chickens should be allowed, or people complaining about others having chickens. But we have the municipal code, it is what it is, and even if that may not be our priority, if it's causing a nuisance for the neighborhood, that's something that we'd probably be enforcing unless the council chooses to change the law. When it comes to razor wire, at this point, we are enforcing the law, which currently razor wire is not permitted anywhere in the city, but we are focusing especially where it would never be allowed according to the code, which is adjacent to residential uses. Razor wire can be seen as, I think, in some industrial areas, they believe it provides them some comfort, that it keeps out criminal activity. On the other hand, we found that it's pretty easy for people to use bolt cutters and cut right through a chain link fence, and they're not going over the fence. But in any event, at this point, we intend to enforce it where it's adjacent to residential property, where barbed wire is not even allowed, but I think we need to take a look at what we do as far as industrial properties. So then chickens, locking trash bins. Currently, the code requires locking dumpsters in the PBIT area downtown, we've already sent out courtesy notices on that. That's something that could be enforced by either DPU or our office. I think the complaint is that from some people downtown, if the dumpsters are allowed to be unlocked, people will get in there, sort through the trash, and it becomes a nuisance for the area. So at this point, we've sent the courtesy notices, and I think we'll have to regroup on what level of enforcement we want to do on that, or whether you want to look at requiring locking trash bins for the commercial areas and other parts of town. Of course, if you do that, there's probably going to be a cost to the users there, too. Signs, illegal signs are, have always been an issue, people stapling up signs on poles and that sort of thing. Right now, the enforcement is usually just, we take the sign down and we throw it away. But of course, that's an issue. Alley dumping is a big topic we're working with the administration on. We had a meeting the other day with nearly every city department involved, working through how we're going to deal with alley dumping. So that's going to be a big topic, I know we're going to be returning to you with. CUPs and zoning, that's always an issue. I think our dedicated team will always be requiring businesses to comply with their CUPs and appropriate zoning. Cannabis businesses, that's going to be a big issue, whether you want us to enforce. When we first banned cannabis businesses as a formal matter 12 years ago, maybe, we were in court shutting down all marijuana dispensaries, and then I think the council sentiment later on became that, well, don't start shutting them down until we have a legal way to do that in place. And so we've kind of stalled on that, except to the ones that are not in complaints with state law. Of course, we assist the state in enforcing the law, too. But as the city looks at fully legalizing cannabis businesses, we will ask for direction on what you would like our office to be doing as far as enforcement, and of course, then some of the issues that have already been teed up, motels, converting them to long-term occupancy and then inspecting them, liquor stores, mobile vending is always an issue, what level of enforcement you would like there. So that's what we have at this point, we're just looking for questions or direction the council might want to give.
That concludes our presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much, all right. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to comment on this? Please come forward, anyone in our community? This is an opportunity to discuss it? With that, we will go to the council, and we will start with Member Arias, Member Carbasi, Member Chavez.
Thank you. I appreciate the comprehensive update, legal counsel. I want to start off with, you know, suggesting that when it comes to enforcing current code and standards, I like to see us do it equally across the city. So if we don't expect residents in North Fresno to live next to businesses that have razor wire, it should not be acceptable in South Fresno. Whatever we decide to enforce, it needs to be done across the whole board, because we have citywide ordinances for a reason, they're not ordinances specific to one part of the city. So on these specific areas that you ask for direction, I do want to see the razor wire enforced when it's near residential, and when it's also near other areas. We have significant razor wire around school routes where kids are walking to and from school, and the last thing I need is for somebody to be injured, especially when the businesses clearly know that it's not allowed. And to your point, every indication that I've seen, folks are walking around with bolt cutters, and they're cutting through the fences, so it's not going to keep anyone out, it's just going to injure somebody as they're trying to get out or provide services to that site. In terms of the trash bins in downtown, again, I think we need to be very clear and enforce the ordinances. The downtown businesses asked for these ordinances, the property owners supported the ordinances, and it's now on us to enforce it. So whether it's the Department of Public Utilities or the corner enforcement, we have to follow through with those enforcement mechanisms, because what we're seeing is the transient population going through the garbage bins, creating messes in the alleyways, and then we have to pick up a tab to clean up that mess, and it just becomes a vicious cycle. In terms of motels, I still, I know you guys are still working through the details of that, in my view, we have to expedite that process and make sure that we're enforcing inspections, code enforcement, and safety, health and safety standards on those motels. We have known for decades that they're being used for long-term residency, which they're not supposed to, and we know that they're substandard, the vast majority of them, and yes, there will be displacement, but most of those motels in my district have 80% vacancy. So it's not like we're going to have to come up with a 200-bed apartment complex to replace them to. Some of them have plenty of space to accommodate relocation, but the business owners have had decades to bring their facilities up to standard, and they still haven't. So I'd like to see the motel inspection program off and running, and I want every single room in those motel facilities inspected, especially when we know that they can't even pass an exterior inspection review. In terms of the code enforcement and the NRT, there's a few things I like about the NRT model. One of them is that it's a proactive approach, which I think is helpful. Another is that they've been active in going to community meetings, meeting people, educating them about what are the conditions and the supports and services available to them, and that there's always ability to speak multiple languages. We have a diverse city, we have to be able to communicate with the customers. What I like to see is hear the conversation from the rest of my council colleagues. I know that when it comes to the NRT, the vast majority of the neighborhoods have been in my district, and we have hundreds of neighborhoods in the city that require the same level of attention, and in some of the places in my district, they've been there for 10 or five years, and I know that some of my colleagues want some of the similar benefits in their part of town. So I'll be open to hearing what they have to say on it. I also want to add, in general, legal counsel, that I think we need to make a concerted effort to prioritize neighborhoods and code enforcement around schools. I get a lot of calls of abandoned houses, abandoned cars, blight, health and safety right adjacent to schools where kids are walking by, and you guys have been very responsive when we identify a school, you go and clean up the neighborhood pretty quickly, people will clean up their properties, but it can't be up to us to remind you that there's 150 schools in the city, and that each of those schools should have safe, clean paths on the way back and forth for elementary kids. With that, I'll turn it over to the council president.
Thank you. Member Carbasi, followed by Member Chavez, followed by Member Soria. Member Carbasi?
Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to have discussion before going right to a motion, I appreciate that. Lots of questions here. Regarding the 250,000, what would, you said there are unfunded positions, or would be adding positions?
We, first of all, this is $250,000 less than code enforcement had the year before, and so currently, we have three code positions plus another position. Erica actually went upstairs and filled a position up there, so hers is vacated, so we have at least four positions that are authorized by council, but we don't have funding for them because of this.
Got it. Mr. Sky, can you come up, please? Can you tell us regarding NRT? Kind of tired after lunch, I apologize. Can you explain to me some of the successes you've had, and then do you partner with other entities and groups that are impacted by NRT, like Fresno Unified, people like that?
Yeah, sure, happy to do it, council member. So, you know, as I stated, we've been in 15 neighborhoods, and we walk every neighborhood through a four-phased process, and so that means that we can start a neighborhood tomorrow, and they'll be in our revitalization process. We could have been in a neighborhood for five years, and they are also in our revitalization process, they're in different phases. So this neighborhood, we are in every day of the week. This neighborhood, we go to and touch once a quarter, that's different, and that's because the community's capacity has increased over time, because that's part of what we're doing, we have to have an exit strategy. Yeah, success strategy, so I kind of went over the broad strokes, I think you heard me articulate those broad strokes. If you'd like me, I can talk to you about specific neighborhoods, is there one that you'd like me to name in particular, or I can just rattle off a couple?
No, you can just give me one of the ones that you think is the most successful, that best represents NRT.
Yeah, so, I would say that each neighborhood, we have had success in certain areas that we are very proud of, and yet it's not a perfect process because we are ultimately working with people. And so, and so we've had some struggles, so I wouldn't say there was one that exceeds all others, but, you know, one that we feel really good about is, of course, Hidalgo-Levenworth, where we've seen blight decrease 96%, resident efficacy up 133%, crime down 12%. We've seen, you know, the S-Bax, the language arts and math scores. For Hidalgo, the language arts improved greater than their comparable school. For Levenworth, they're in the top 10, now they are a dual immersion school, so they have an advantage, but they're top 10 in ELA and in math. You know, values are up significantly there, resident priorities, we've accomplished 80% of them, fires are down 53%. Just an example.
Is it the same presentation? Can we go back to the map of the neighborhoods?
Oh, sure, yeah. There you go.
Okay, that answers my questions, I have another question for a city attorney.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Going back to what Councilmember Arias was saying, I would agree on principle that it's important to universally enforce our rules. I have a concern, though. There are times when things come up, let's say, someone gets cited for razor wire, and they get really upset, and then they go around trying to slide all the other businesses and report them, which I think is kind of what happened. Sometimes businesses, when they build something out, it's built according to all the regulations, and then a couple of years later, regulations change, and then these small businesses are asked to retrofit, but they're not really prepared to deal with that. It can make or break them, having that sudden expense. Is there anything that we do to help these small businesses when that situation comes? Because there may be an issue that we have to really enforce in one district, but it may not be as big of a problem in another district, with the exception of schools that should be universally enforced, he's absolutely right about that.
So yes, generally, a structure would be required to comply with the rules in effect at the time that it's built. If those rules change later, they may not be required to update. But on the issue of razor wire, as far as we can tell, it's never been allowed, and it's not been allowed anywhere, there's no exception, and in fact, even for barbed wire, they would have to have, it can't be close to residential, and they would have to have obtained a permit for it. Now, I think it's one of those things that maybe there's been some acquiescence on, or lack of enforcement. But like on the razor wire example, it's been banned for at least 50 years, as far as we can tell in the municipal code.
So if we, if today, if we were to request action that we would ask you to hold off on fining people with razor wire, with the exception of near a school or near residential area, could we?
We could do that, but I would suggest if you're going to do that, it'd also be a direction to return with a change to the municipal code.
Right.
To reflect in that direction and make it apply everywhere.
My last question, we saw some pictures of some homes, and the bathrooms had been repainted, and it looks really nice. Do we verify what vendors are being used to make sure that they're not just painting over it, and they're actually solving the underlying problem if there's mold or anything like that?
Phil, or anybody want to speak to that? How do we verify?
I know it's a bit of a challenge what I'm asking, I just want to make sure, because we're doing our job, and we're using the resources, we want to make sure it's being done right and it doesn't come back.
How do we verify the work is being done correctly?
Yeah, so obviously, for work that requires a permit, that's a safeguard for us, right? And so we ensure that, you know, we have inspector go out there building, inspector goes out there and confirms the work was done according to code, and that it complies fully and completely before signing off, and until that is signed off, we can't close the case, we can't verify compliance. Now for something like painting over, you know, our code requires quality workmanship as a general rule, and so that's, you know, so our inspectors are ensuring that when they look at something, at when they saw the violation previously, and now they go back and look at that same wall, they're ensuring that the quality of the workmanship, you know, meets that standard, that it is of a standard that a professional would have done. Now, it doesn't mean the professional did it, you could have done it as a homeowner.
Sure.
But the quality, it meets that standard.
Okay. Now, for example, the rental inspection program, this is my very last question. Is it possible, like when we go in there to inspect and we see, oh, well, that isn't fastened right, or that's not done right, we just focus on our checklist and what we're supposed to do? I want to make sure we're not just trying to pick and choose and start putting these businesses through the rigors. Thank you.
The question is on the proactive rental inspection program, do we have a checklist, and do we follow that checklist?
And not focus on other things that aren't on the checklist, just make sure we're not picking on them, we're just focusing on the issues we see.
I know there is a checklist, we get at least that, if they observe other things, they may refer it out to the other teams. You want to weigh in on that, Kevin?
That is correct. So.
So we, the way the program is set up, we do have a checklist that covers basic health and safety, and then if we see something else that needs to be referred over to an area team, it may go to the reactive team, or even to asset, if it rises to that level.
You're welcome. Next is Member Chavez, followed by Member Soria, Member Sparza. So, Member Chavez?
Thank you. Doug, I got a question for you. So, we've had, how long has code been in your department now?
About three and a half months.
So, three and a half months. What I think is missing from this conversation is really an assessment of the service delivery model that you've actually seen, to where you know now, I think, by this point, what works, what doesn't. I like to see that, for us to guide that decision-making process on just what, you know, the needs are in the department, now that you've had an opportunity to get in there and have your team in there. It'd have to be right now, maybe like a memo for the council to have a summary of what that is, because I think that'll be very helpful as we're allocating resources. And I think what you're seeing up here is you're gonna get seven different priorities, right? Very unique council districts. And I appreciate the start of the conversation, but I think that's gonna have to be refined a little bit more with each council member. I don't have motel problems like my colleague does in District 3, right? But I do have other issues in my neighborhoods. I like to do code sweeps in certain neighborhoods that are starting to get run down. And so I think what we should set up is first to have that assessment that I described, use that as a guide, see where we can allocate resources or move some around. And then the second piece of that, I think, will be a model that, I mean, I have full confidence that you and your team will develop that, as to how we go about communicating the needs of each council district to your office so that it can get solved. I'm not really interested so much as to how you do that. I just want to make sure that if I turn something in, that it's gonna get solved in a timely manner. And so I'm not gonna be in the business of micromanaging or telling you or your staff what to do or how to do that, but I just want stuffs to get done when we turn them in. But that assessment, I think, will be very, very helpful for us going forward. Thanks.
Uh, Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I have just have a couple of comments. One, I want to say thank you again to our city attorney staff, the code enforcement staff. I know since the change, at least from the feedback that I've gone from my staffs, in particular, the staff that is working directly with the constituents, it has been like night and day in terms of the responsiveness, transparency, the fact that we can call immediately our constituents when issues are resolved pretty quickly. And that, to me, is we've really improved the level of customer service that my office can deliver, so I'm very, very grateful for that. I'm grateful for Christina's reports. I read them, you know? And you know I read them because I respond. I am grateful for the reports that you do, because when I'm out in the neighborhood and people are asking me, I have an answer for them, and that is very good for me. So I appreciate the due diligence and just staying on top of those, especially for those cases that are taking a lot longer, but at least we have some kind of status. Doug, I just want to say, when you talk about prioritizing health and safety, which, yes, I'm in agreement with that, all I'm gonna say is that we do have to have kind of a balance, because even though there may not be a health and safety issue, we still get a lot of calls when it comes to abandoned and illegal cars, or illegal activity, or dumping in houses, that it may not be a health and safety code. So I just want to make sure that, while that is, health and safety is a priority, that we do still keep a balance, because it is about blight in the neighborhoods. And so I just want to make sure that that is clear. I agree with Councilmember Chavez in terms of not trying to micromanage. I think that if we just give you guys something, and we get a response back, that we can communicate to our constituents, I'm perfectly fine with that. So, I know my staff says that, you know, they appreciate all the work that you guys have done in the last few months, so I want to just, again, emphasize that, and thank you guys for the work.
Thank you. Member Sparza is actually next, but I think he's doing some research. So for me, I was wondering on your options, city attorney, are those things for us to choose or motion, or is it?
Well, I would take this approach. We're going to keep doing what we're doing now, unless you give us direction otherwise. In other words, if you want to say, I would rather see you do this instead, here's an opportunity to, as a body, give us that official direction. Otherwise, as has been suggested, I think we'll just keep doing what we are doing now.
Okay. And so, what I originally thought
Options.
on the options was that we'd have to motion that to make sure that item is part of the strategy of your office.
Yes. In other words, I think if there's at least something significant, that the council acts as a body and gives us direction through a vote, I think that would be appropriate.
All right. So I would make a motion to combine the area teams with NRT. And on the flip side of here is why I'm suggesting that, directions and options. Number one, this would tailor services to the district. It would not only tailor the services, but also the enforcement through your office of each district's priorities. I stress the word "each" because we're all different. Each one of us has, we have some common problems, but on the other hand, we have some very unique areas in each district. Number two, the responsiveness on your direction and options, that would enable us to have accountability directly to the council members, so we make sure that our priorities are implemented, and that would produce, the next item here, results. So the results to each district would be fulfilled and seen and operated on. And that does not exclude, my council member to my right was concerned about council meetings and language issues, and that doesn't preclude that at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's something I would like to see. As I indicated earlier, when I had that situation in my district at El Dorado Park, it was a fantastic team effort and a result that was very, very good. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to combine area teams and NRT. Seconded by Member Chavez. That's my comments, and then I, oh, I wanted to say this. Tim, you had a great quote. You have the right people for the right job at the right time. And I think it applies to your entire staff, Doug. And I wanted to express my gratitude to code and to the leadership. Two precise areas. One, the communication lines have been open between the council and your department, like it's never been before, and I sincerely appreciate that. Number two, when we get a call, as everyone has said, you're extremely responsive, and it just, it's not overnight, been darned close. And I had a list of things I wanted to talk about, but I did want to say, on one instance, in August, we had this lady call, and she was really distraught. And there was a vacant lot, the homeless people had taken over the lot, rubbish, trash, all the things that go with it. It was really disgusting. The neighborhood complained about it for three years. You got the call, your team activated, and this is, the lady, when she called back, she had tears of joy. I mean, she was just so happy that after three years, finally, the property had been cleared, and the neighborhood has been restored by your, and your team. That is, the right people for the right job at the right time came through for this lady. So thank you all so very much for that. Each and every one of you is fantastic. Member Sparza, it's your time.
Yes. Doug, I want to echo quite a bit of what I've heard here so far from my colleagues. In my district, we do have an extraordinary number of signs, right, which you had put on the list. And I know it's not necessarily health and safety priority, but it is a nice horn of blight to my district. So I think maybe developing some form of strategy, right? It might not be number one on the priority list, but maybe there's a strategy to, you know, utilize any extra resources or time to tackle that issue beyond taking them down, right? I mean, we can go take them down, but I'm not sure if there's a more structural way to actually contact and penalize the folks and organizations and companies that are actually doing, putting these signs up. So, yeah, so signs in my district, right, would be something I think are an extraordinary issue. And, I mean, we have all the other issues as well, but I think we've kind of discussed some of those, and I heard from Councilmember Caprilli about the responsiveness of your office. And then, a discussion we've had in the past, right? And most recently, it came in the form of the Airbnb policy that we passed, and just looking at ways to provide enforcement outside of the nine-to-five timeframe, where things, or something may require the cities of attention outside that timeframe. So I'm not sure what that looks like yet. I'm not sure what we would prioritize. There are lots of violations and such that occur outside of business hours on weekdays. I know most recently, in my district, we had a couple of houses burned down, and code enforcement had been responsive to those sites, right? But just, I think at least one of them occurred after hours, when we were not there to secure the site. So I just want to stay open to creative ideas about how to, you know, how do we enforce outside of nine-to-five, Monday to Friday?
We can look at, certainly if that's a priority, is to either occasionally on a regular basis, assigning certain people to work after normal business hours, and maybe weekends, too. If there are certain problems that occur then that don't occur during business hours.
Sure. And I would want it to be data-driven, right? I don't want to do it arbitrarily, where we're just making people work overtime or work after hours. I want to see what are some of the top issues that are occurring outside of that timeframe, and see if we can tackle some of that.
Right. We'll look into it.
All right. Thank you for your comments. City manager, you have asked to speak.
Great, thank you. So, before making any changes to NRT, the mayor and I would like to ask council for an opportunity to research, discuss, and work with you in developing a plan for NRT. I know Phil kind of gave an overview of some of the successes and metrics. We do think it's working really well. The Restore Fresno meeting has been going on for quite some time, with many neighborhood and community partners at the table. And if you gave us a couple of weeks, we could have a robust discussion on NRT and have Fresno Unified and others here to talk about those metrics, whether it's decrease in crime, increase in property values, test scores, improvement, et cetera. And so we would just ask council... Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had the attention of council, that's all. So we would just ask council for some time to get together with you all to talk about that before any significant changes are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sparza, did you punch up again? A member Arias? I'm sorry, Member Berdiful hasn't spoke yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the city attorney know in all of code, I appreciate what you're doing. I think you're doing a great job. I'm very comfortable actually just leaving it in your hands, Doug. I hear the direction that some are expressing. I'm comfortable with that. The bottom line is, I think there is, frankly, just a distinct difference now, and we appreciate the responsiveness and everyone working in your department that does a fantastic job. Christina gives me all those, the same thing everyone else gets, and we appreciate it very much, all of you. So I just want to be publicly acknowledge the great work that you do, and on behalf of the citizens, because we're all working for them. So, thanks.
Thank you. Member Arias?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to remind the council that when we approved the relocation of the code enforcement to legal counsel, we also included direction for the council to come back in six months and give us a check-in, and tell us what's working, what's not working, what changes we ought to consider. So my hope is that we're still on pace to do that, and that we do that in advance of us discussing any additional resources with the five, or seven, or 10, whatever million dollars we're gonna have in surplus, so that we can make a really good, educated and informed decision on any adjustments that would be permitted in nature. And then lastly, I would just ask that if we're gonna go away from the NRT process that's been in place for a while, I recognize some of the arguments for it, that we ensure that we don't treat this as it has been historically been treated when it comes to resource allocation, which is equal, that every district has an equal amount of needs when it comes to code enforcement. The last thing I'd like to see is my, you know, homes and properties burning, because nobody's dealt with health and safety enforcement, while we're spending time dealing with party houses up north that are nuisance. So I want to be thoughtful, legal counsel, that you don't simply take the cookie-cutter approach, everybody gets the same thing, and then we're left with the same end result, which is people complaining that we're not being responsive to things that are clearly a health and safety hazard. As you know, not to bring up freeways, but when everybody gets the same amount of money, when they don't have the same amount of needs in landscaping, it results in some parts of the state being left behind. So I want to make sure that we're not just gonna look at this as a cookie-cutter approach.
Uh, Member Carvasi?
I think we want the same thing, but I just want to make sure, every district's different. There's different types of zoning, different types of issues they face. So what may be an issue in my district may not be an issue in District 6 or 7. They are unique, so I need to be able to deploy forces out there through code enforcement in a very different manner. So if we're gonna share our resources equally, let's just say, for example, it doesn't mean they're not gonna be used. I may use it for a different kind of call than is used. But the one exception I will make, though, is absolutely around our schools, we need to be very concerned, all over this city, the safety of our kids. So that's just one area where I think universally, we should have a very strong approach. Thank you.
Okay, screen is almost clear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're right. Member Berdiful, thanks.
Yeah, I just unfortunately feel the need to respond to Councilman Arias. You know, we go into this thing where you continue to denigrate people up north. I don't appreciate it. My constituents don't appreciate it, whether it's fighting over SB1 money, and you have greater need than we do, or now it's greater need for code enforcement, as though we don't have problems except, you know, KEG parties. That's simply not true. I get tired of it. I don't appreciate this whole warfare that you create with North versus South. You do it, we don't do it, and I encourage you to stop doing it. And I expect our code enforcement people to respond regardless of where the address is or who it is. You just make sure the entire city is dealt with in terms of code enforcement.
Member Carvasi?
I think all the KEG parties are in D4 by Fresno State. Just want to clarify that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the Rams, too. Fresno City College Rams. And FPU are the banana slugs, or, oh, not Santa Cruz. Sunbirds. There's one right there. Thank you.
Counsel, if I could, before we go on, I want to make sure that I thank the people that are most responsible for this. Well, yes, we have 90 people up in code. I think the leadership is vitally important. Erica and Christina have done a wonderful job, as well as the three managers and the supervisors. I mean, they have just dived right in. They are the ones that are your primary contacts for the most part. The communication is incredible. I think they're doing a good job of working with the people up there and working with the community. So I want to thank them, because without them, none of this could work.
I think you have 100% support on that, and we appreciate it as well. All right. So from this, we have my motion in a second. All those in favor, indicate by aye. Aye. One, two, three, four. Aye? Aye. Five? Five, one, Member Carvasi voting no. Six, one. Thanks. All right.
[inaudible]
Nice try. Anyway.
You get no code.
Too late. Too late, yeah. No, we're a fair and square organization, for sure. Okay, I think that's it for the agenda, unless someone can remind me if I overlook something. That would lead us to closed session. Sorry? Oh, unscheduled communication. Anyone wish to address the council on any item in the world? Come on down. You'll have three minutes, once we have your name and address. Note takers? All right. We'll close that. It will go to closed session. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss any closed session item? Please come forward. If not, we'll refer to this city attorney to make the announcements, and after your announcements, we'll go to closed session, and then we'll adjourn from there.
Yes. Counsel, yes, in closed session, we have, first, the discussion.
If not, we'll refer to this city attorney to make the announcements, and after your announcements, we'll go to closed session, then we'll adjourn from there.
Yes. Counsel, yes, in closed session, we have, first, a discussion of cybersecurity, second, a real property negotiation concerning the listed APNs and the negotiating parties, and